All right, you said?
Good.
It's good for you.
No, literally, we've not seen.
It is great to hear. He's real. He'll know. I don't feel like that. He doesn't seem very.
No.
Yeah.
We had to reenact that.
Can't hear himself. He's exercising, but he's over there.
He wants to get back out.
It's been fun.
Oh, yeah. Hope you enjoy it.
We're still married. We're doing good.
Yeah.
It's getting your talk. At least you have a script this time.
This is the day. Day home.
Well, good morning. Thank you for being here. We're going to go ahead and get started. If you'd stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the prayer. Andrew Hawkins is going to lead us this morning from Kansas Bible Camp. Appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Our Father in Heaven, we're mindful this morning of the man that we read about in your word that was heard by you, the one who said, "Be merciful to me, a sinner." And we read that he returned to his house justified. You heard his prayer. We recognize that we all are in need of mercy, and we thank you that you are so patient. You're so kind to us in showing us your mercy that it's easy for us to take it for granted. So we don't want to do that this morning. We want to request it, request your help in this time as these important issues are discussed, the budget items particularly, things that affect every resident of Reno County, and then the other things that affect less of us. Father, thank you for John and Ron and Randy and Don and Daniel and all the others who are serving this morning. Thank you for the one who taught us to serve, our Savior Jesus Christ, in His name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Well, this morning is National Recovery Month, the month of September. Got a proclamation I'd like to read and will present this morning. Whereas the misuse of alcohol and illicit substance costs the country hundreds of billions of dollars every year, we also see the devastating costs of quality of life, morality, even rural America in Kansas is not immune to. And whereas the impacts stretch from families to workforce, from schools to medical community, and all feel the effects. And whereas the recovery is a process of changing through which people improve their health and wellness, build resilience, live self-directed lives, and strive to reach their full potential by managing their health, home, purpose, and community. Furthermore, Reno County Recovery Collaborative is one of the local resources for recovery and resilience-based services. And furthermore, that by building the durable network of community partners from the medical and behavioral health sector, substance use prevention and education, social services, law enforcement persons with lived experience, and Oxford houses, the Reno Recovery Collaboration Partners are poised to offer and refer families the means to build resistance, offsetting the effects of ACEs and reducing the public cost of substance use disorder. And furthermore, as Reno County has been leading the charge in promoting a thriving recovery community by giving support and understanding, instilling in the hearts and the minds of the children, there is hope that all can live a happy and healthy life and that recovery is possible. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Reno County, Kansas, that September 2024 shall be known as National Recovery Month. And witness thereof, we have herein to set our hands and cause the seal of Reno County, Kansas, to be affixed this 28th day of August 2024. So you want us to come up?
Hi.
Hi.
My name's Thomas Simmons. I work with the Reno County Health Department, primarily with substance use disorder, and I'm also the chair of the Reno County Recovery Collaborative. We just want to say thank you guys for giving us the opportunity to do this and that we look forward to working with it in the future.
Okay. Thank you. Sandra, you want us to come up?
Okay.
Say you want all up here?
Yes, I'd rather you all up here, yes.
Just tell us what to do, Randy. We're just, we're just lost for the ride.
We're trying to give you a hint.
Come on.
We were trying to give you a hint.
All right. Your favorite thing, smile. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here for public comment this morning? We moved you to the business items to let you speak there, Jim. I'll address that here in a second. Well, seeing none, then number five, determine additions or revisions to the agenda. I know you guys received of late a couple additions to there that got added on there, but one that we would like to add this morning down at 7D. Mr. Jim Strong's going to speak to us. Thought it'd be easier to do that maybe than to, if you guys are okay with that, than to have him speak publicly in case there's some questions back and forth. It'd be a lot easier to address it that way, so. Do we have consensus, okay with that, everybody? Okay. All right. Consent agenda, six, six A and B vouchers, and then the LCC final minutes. Approval for them. Do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So move.
Daniel, and then seconded by Commissioner Bogner. Comments? Nothing? And roll call.
Commissioner Hirsch?
Yes.
Commissioner Friesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Weitzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes.
Man, we're flying right along. Moving to business items, seven A. Horizon's quarterly report.
Good morning. Vicki Mater, I'm CEO for Horizon's Mental Health Center. I wanted to start my report with you guys today, sharing what we like to call a mission moment. And that we have a lot of mission moments at Horizon, so it's kind of hard to pick. But the one I'd like to share has to do with our assertive community treatment team. So that team works very closely with individuals with severe and persistent mental illness who are at risk of being hospitalized or being incarcerated. And so we had a situation where we had someone that was being served by that team that was, came to us probably about seven or eight months pregnant. That team really wrapped around services around that individual, got them connected to healthcare, got them in to see physicians, and kept them, kept their mental health, helped them with their mental health during that time. When that individual decided that to, well, when that individual went into labor, that team spent 24/7 with that individual to support them through labor and delivery. And they felt like that was really important because this person was going to give their baby up for adoption, and that's hard. And so as a mother and a lot of other mothers too, this individual didn't have anyone to be with them, and that team really stepped up and supported them and in turn was a great support to the community by helping through that. It was a great support to the hospital staff. And so I just wanted to share that. That's one of the little things that we do as we support individuals in our community with mental health issues. As far as the next item, my services report. So last time I was here, a couple things came up that you wanted more information on, and one of them had to do with jails, jail services, and how we're impacting keeping individuals out of jail. So our team worked with the jail to get a little bit of data. And we identified that from 11 of 23 to 62424, 362 inmates received mental health services from us. We, there were 209 inmates that were released from jail. And of those 209 inmates, 98 returned to jail. So that's 47%. Four returned after two years. 28 returned after one year. We had 33 after six months and 33 in less than six months. So I'm barely confident in the data, but I don't want to say that I'm super confident in the data because there's a little, we're going to need to work on that. But what we would like to do is continue to track that, to see what kind of impact we're making. I didn't have any questions about that.
How does that compare to the rest of the population? Do you have those numbers?
I do not have numbers for the rest of the population. I do know nationally it is higher for mental health, individuals' mental health issues to return to jail more frequently. We have identified additional needs there, and we are planning to hire an additional staff to support reentry from the jail into the community. We don't think that that service is robust enough right now, so we are advertising and going to add that position to our team.
What accommodations are made for post-release with regards to what you feel is the reason that they ended up back in jail? Is it a frequent flyer program? Is it that they have? Or is it a situation where no jobs and lack of?
I think, yeah, I think it's a combination of all those things. I think social determinants of health play a big factor. A lot of individuals who are released from jail don't have anywhere to go. They, they don't have a home. They don't have a job. And so when you, you don't have, you know, no source of income, no source of food, those things play a big part in that. We also sometimes struggle with getting individuals engaged in our services because they're worried about cost because they don't have insurance. We do not, we serve everyone. It doesn't matter if they can pay or not, but sometimes we really struggle with individuals. They don't want to come up with a bill. And even though we tell them we're not, it's going to be okay. They just want to, you know, make their own way. And so it's really hard for them to accept that, accept that from us. So I think it's a multiple, there's multiple things that influence that. I don't think it's one in particular thing.
Has any organization or any group of people been asked to step up the plate to figure out how you can do post-work with, get them, get them either within an education system or where they're qualified, or what's available out there from the public so that your receivability doesn't, we can drop that down? I just, I'm just curious if, if you targeted things that, okay, we need to do this, one, two. This is the first thing. This is the second thing. You know, a step progress to see if, if, if any of those progresses will work? I'm just curious.
So there is the stepping up council. So that, that group meets and is, works on strategies. I know that they are working on, you know, they work on homelessness and all of those things. At Horizon specifically, we try to engage them in our services and then connect them with the resources in the community that we're aware of. We also can help find housing. We have some funding from the state that we help individuals find housing. So I am not, there are other agencies in the county that help, and there's other members of the stepping up council, but I do believe that we need to continue to work on that and find ways to better that. I think it would really help if we had information and data. I think that this was kind of surprising to me because I've never seen any data on, on this. And so I think working with the jail and with us to try to get more timely data would be very beneficial. And I know that Tyler Vance, who's in charge of our jail program, is working with them on that.
Is a lot of this drug-related?
I don't know which, what, the percentage that's drug-related.
He kind of took my question about other agencies in the follow-up from that. I was, I was kind of curious myself. Now, is, in the other partner agencies, they definitely need supports when they're out. We all know that. We all need certain supports ourselves.
Yeah.
In that, and I'm just going to ask you this, is that other mental health agencies that are helping support this individual? Or is there a spiritual element in there that has a support that you can offer and anybody that would partner with you, i.e. the churches in the community, to help out? Because, you know, a person needs to be well-rounded, and that's just, that's part of our mental health.
I think that's probably an untapped market for our coordination of care. And I think that as we continue to look at how we can better engage the community, that is an area that we probably need to focus on.
Well, I just wondered if you'd ever tried to call, you know, some leaders of some of the churches to, to the table and see whether they have some programs and they could outreach and help as well too, maybe? Because some of them do.
Yeah. And I know we work with some, but I think we could probably build that up. I think overall, we need to connect more, bringing more people to the table.
Yeah. Thank you.
Continue to work on that.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else got any questions for Vicki?
All right. The next thing that you guys asked me for was related to hospital, state hospital discharges. So there was some conversation that there's a lot of individuals being discharged from other counties to Reno County. We did some tracking back to June, so it wasn't something we were really keeping track of. But we are now. And from June to last week, there were no individuals discharged from Larnard to Reno County that weren't Reno County residents. Now, I did talk to the team, and it appears that when individuals are discharged here from another county, it's because they are homeless. And our homeless shelter doesn't turn anyone away. And so that is usually what precipitates that, that release back to our county. We did have a few individuals that were from Reno County that went to other counties. We had a couple of those. Have any other questions about that? I skipped Reno County Services. I'm sorry. Number two on the report. I included in your packet just a breakdown of the number of clients we've seen in Reno County. So we had, from February to June. And the reason it's February to June is because we got a new electronic medical record, and I could get the data. So we have served 3,542 individuals in Reno County. We've provided 54,567 services. And then the graph shows a kind of a breakdown of some of those services that we've provided. So it includes community psychiatric support and treatment service, therapy. Respite care is a large one. That's where we have some houses where children can go so parents can get a little bit of a respite. And they receive some services while they're in that, that home. Any questions about any of those? The next graphic was just overall for all of the counties that we serve. So overall, we, we've seen 4,420 with 66,000 services across all five counties that we serve. All right. I wanted to, last thing I want, one of the other things I want to do is highlight one of our programs. So when we became a certified community behavioral health clinic, one of the programs that we were mandated to implement was a program called Individual Placement Support. And that is to help individuals find employment. And so we've had that program for a little over two years. It's taken a little time to build up staffing for that, but we are now fully staffed. In fact, we were having to hire more staff because the demand for the program. But we've served 115 individuals. We have been able to help 35 find employment. And so we help them find competitive employment. So we work with employers within the county. We're not, we're not giving them jobs at Horizons. I mean, they can apply for jobs at Horizons, of course, but it's not an employment program that we're running at Horizons. We connect with area businesses. We help support them while they're working. So if their mental health issues are affecting their work, we help support them and the employer. And that, that program is continuing to grow. We just had to hire a third individual to help support that program. So I just want to share that with you. I included our financials. I don't know if you had any questions about those. As you might remember, last fiscal year, we had a pretty significant loss due to making some adjustments to wages to better recruit staff. And then our payment rate changed in January from Medicaid to account for that. So we have recouped those losses. And that's the way that system is supposed to work. And so we are in the process of submitting another cost report to the state, and so our rate will change again in January. As a result of being able to hire more staff, we provided 30,000 additional services compared to the prior year. We are hiring therapists right now very well. We are attracting a lot of therapists to our community at the moment. Lot of factors in that, but I'm sure pay is part of it. But we are getting a really good reputation of a good place to work in Reno County. And so we've hired, I think, seven or eight therapists within the last two months. So that was really good news for us and our community because that's been a struggle. I think that's all I have. Any other questions? There's a lot today.
Yeah. It was. Thank you. Any other questions?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicki. Appreciate it. Well, let's move to seven B on business items. Consider for approval, the bid of Sunrise Elevator for repairs and modernization of the public elevator at the Law Enforcement Center. Mr. Harland, you're on.
Harland Depew, Maintenance Director. Yeah, as, you're probably aware, we've had, been planning for a number of years to do a modernization project on the elevators at the Law Enforcement Center. There's one in the front that serves the public, and then another one in, kind of in the back that is used by the sheriff and the police department primarily. Anyway, we had budgeted for that and had planned to do both of those elevators this year. But the state, since that budget was put together, the state has implemented a major statewide elevator, I guess, updated or implemented requirements for elevators across the state that required a lot of additional work and expense. So after discussing the options with the county administrator and the city, we've decided to recommend doing just the public elevator this year. And then we'll budget for the back elevator in a future year. The project would retain the existing car but replace all of the controls, the mechanics, yeah, modernize the controls and mechanical equipment and bring the elevator up to current state code requirements. We, we did specify non-proprietary equipment in this project, which I think will serve the county well in the future in terms of giving us better options for maintenance and repair and those kind of things going forward as opposed to being kind of locked into one of the big brand names. So that's, that's good. We did get bids from TK Elevator, Sunrise Elevator, and Schindler. Otis was, they declined to bid on this project. TK was actually the lowest bid at a cost of $149,857. And Sunrise was second at $144,140. The project would be funded through the CIP budget with 50% of that cost being reimbursed by the city. And that's, that's specified in the lease agreement that, that the city has with the county. In addition to that base bid, there's a significant amount of work by others as it's classified that will need to be completed in order to meet the new state of Kansas requirements. That work is estimated not to exceed 50,000. That involves a lot of lighting, additional spectacles, sprinkler heads in the hoistway, some additional monitoring through the fire alarm system, including they're, they're now requiring cameras in the elevator. And my understanding is if someone has an emergency and calls 911, they have the option or the opportunity, 911 can actually see into the elevator and see what. A few other things like a sump pump in the pit and then fire-rated enclosure around the mechanical area for the, in the machine room. Those are pretty much all new requirements that the state is, has implemented. So after reviewing all of the bids, we believe that the Sunrise Elevator bid is, is the best overall bid for the county primarily based on the, the terms and conditions. TK is, had, had a lot longer list of, of terms and conditions and things that, that could potentially cost the county a lot more depending on what happens in the project. One of the big ones was when they removed the hydraulic cylinder, which is buried in the ground. We know that that cylinder is, has leaked a little bit. It's, the elevator's been shut down for a while now because of that. Didn't want to continue to leak fluid out of that cylinder. But if that cylinder is not in casing, then there's potential that some of the soil surrounding the cylinder would be contaminated and would have to be dug out of there and remediated, disposed of properly. disposed of properly. TK's terms and conditions basically say if they find that, then they walk away from it, and it's our responsibility from there on to remediate that situation. Sunrise is, will work with us. They will, they will dig it out. They will place that, any contaminated soil in 55-gallon drums, and then we can, we can dispose of it. So that one thing in and of itself, I believe, justifies paying that extra $5,000. There's quite a number of other things in that terms and conditions that I just believe are, are really more favorable to the county. And then we do have experience with both elevator companies. They're both good companies, but Sunrise is, is a little smaller. They're, they're maybe a little more able to pivot and, and work with us on different things that come up. And Matt Whitley, who's the owner of that company from Benton, is the one that led the project on the partial modernization on the manual elevator here at the courthouse about five years ago and did a great job on that one. So I'm, I'm very comfortable with, with him and his company. So anyway, our recommendation is to award the bid to Sunrise Elevator from Benton. And any questions?
You're gonna get off easy, it looks like. No questions for Harland? Somebody like to entertain a motion to accept the bid that Harland presented to pay Sunrise Elevator for the repairs and modernization? Yep, Harland?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to go along with staff recommendations on the elevator repair.
Okay, and a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Weitzel? Any further comments? Not, roll call?
Commissioner Hirsch?
Yes.
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Mr. Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Weitzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes.
Thank you.
I forgot to mention too that we did require a performance bond on this, on this project. So if for some reason things did get goofy, I don't expect that, but, but we do have that in place.
Okay, good. Clint, you're up, I think. Interfaith Housing. I'll just let you present. And we can discuss it.
Hi, Clint Nelson, CEO of Interfaith Housing. Morning Commissioners, fellow community members. I'm here this morning requesting authorization for a budget revision within our original ARPA housing rehab contract. Contract was executed February 7th of 2023. In Section 6 allows for our, Interfaith as a sub-recipient to request revisions to our budget and to our project targeting with the letter justification in, in a specific budget spreadsheet, which you should have received. Want to be mindful of your time. I know you've got a full agenda. So what I'd like to do is just walk through the specific changes within our justification letter and then allow time to answer any, any questions regarding projects or any other details. So as you can see on the letter, as well as the budget, we have projected out based on our current waiting list for major rehab projects in micro projects, which would be a very robust brush-up program that we've got going on throughout the county right now. We, we project that we're at 3.2 million, just over 3.2 million identified to projects at this point, in that we have more than enough applications qualified on our waiting list to expend the rest of the fund. As we look at the final year that we believe we'll be able to stretch these funds out, we have came in well under targeted averages per project, even for the major roofs, siding, windows, major projects. We've averaged right around $11,000 per project of ARPA funds and then been able to leverage an additional 6,000 through partnership agencies. So we would seek, as we finish out the program on the homeowner rehab side, we would seek to really prioritize certain repair items, one of those being roof replacements, and try to keep that number around 10,000 per project. So through efficiencies and leverages, we've really been able to still satisfy our original targeted project count. So we, by the end of this year, we believe we'll be at 266 completed and closed. Closed meaning we need final evidence, we need homeowner sign-offs, we need contractor sign-offs, and we need to submit this to Iparametric in the county for a final review so that everybody has a clean audit. We believe we'll be at 266. Our, our targeted goal is 330. That's what we had originally proposed, and we believe we will hit that number. And we will accomplish that even while achieving some other milestones for Interfaith, some, what I want to say, home run type happenings that would only be possible with this ARPA fund. So we have been able to acquire three properties that we have held back for acquisition rehab. All three of these residential homes were out of service for a number of years for different reasons, but completely transformed, two of them. One of them's listed right now. Our realtor tells me they've had some really good open houses. Hopefully we'll find that price point and get the right offer in, but really bringing these houses back to life. We are requesting a reduction in our original proposed acquisition rehab number. We had proposed six total. We would like to drop that down to three. We've got the third house sitting ready to start. One of the justifications for that is two of the houses we acquired were deemed really, you know, not, not necessarily great use of rehab funds. I mean, they were beyond repair. We could have put 200,000 into them and they wouldn't have raised out at that. So we have torn down four houses now, just removed them and kind of cleared sites for hopefully infill development in the future. So kind of changed our target with the acquisition rehab. As you can see in the letter, our intent remains the same. Any proceeds from these house sales will cycle back into additional rehab work for homeowners, back into our mission work. Certainly won't land in our reserves. It'll, it'll go back to the community. The fourth bullet point is we're requesting the addition of the St. Elizabeth demolition to our scope of project outcomes. I'm not sure, maybe two of the commissioners were, were here when we, a year before we went under contract, our original proposal was 4.5 million. It included the St. Elizabeth demolition. That got shaved out of our proposal at some point, but we have continued to do our very best to make progress on that, that site and that structure. And we feel like this is a justified request at this point. I'll save any detailed questions until those are posed. And then the last bullet point, all outcomes, we do project that all outcomes will be completed by the end of 2025. That's a full year ahead of what the federal ARPA regs allow for. That means we'll get the county and Iparametric, all of our final reports. We'll do a final closeout audit, and hopefully this housing piece will be cleared from your books with some great success stories. And even further, this program has really strengthened partnerships with the city, with the county, with other nonprofits, has certainly increased interface capacity, and, and we've got systems in place that we didn't have two or three years ago that I believe are transferable to other funding mechanisms. So we are continuing to look on, look at how can we continue with this volume of work moving forward once these funds are, are exhausted. So that's kind of the, the, the five points of our vision that we're requesting today and would stand for any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Nelson? Can you might explain what you're, what you're transferring out of, just so they get a clearer picture maybe, and they probably know anyway, but just so they know how that's gonna come to be able to have the money for the demolition?
Absolutely, thank you for that. A number of communities had a, a very healthy response and appetite for this sort of program and, and have moved through most of their identified funds or what we had hoped to expense in those communities. I could name, go through and name the communities. You can kind of see where we pulled from, from budgets. By the way, column 63, 64, 65, that was our CFO using that identifier based on our reimbursements. So this program has been full reimbursement, start from the jump, and we've now completed 65 reimbursements through the county and Iparametric. But that was her way of, of kind of showing where we're pulling funds. The majority of the funds for, for this request are being pulled from general Reno County line. That line was originally 600,000. That line was targeted to some of the more rural communities, and we've had plenty of challenges in not only getting applicant response, but also going out to some of the smaller communities in our county and, in identifying projects that are viable uses of funds that are, that are, we want to be good stewards with this investment by the county. And if, if the house is so far gone that $20,000 isn't going to change anything in doing structural and foundation repair, you're going to burn up $20,000 pretty quick. So some of the project, potential projects we went and looked at, they just really didn't make sense to invest some money in. One other challenge I should share is that just kind of a, a lack of localized central government in, in, or clerks or whatnot. The, the, the communities that grabbed onto this and, and accomplished the goals, you know, they were out there doing their own localized marketing. They were helping us, pointing us to projects. I will say this, while we haven't had a lot of major rehab projects in some of the very, the smallest communities, the, the Turons, the Silvias, the Plevnes, there has been a pretty good appetite for the brush-up program, and we've had a lot of participation in, in the house painting program. We're covering 1,500 and, and supplies, materials, paint, and seeing some nice results there. So continue to, kind of a learning curve for Interfaith and how we build relationships in, in the smaller communities, but we're not going anywhere. Even after this fund is gone, we'll continue to seek out additional funding. We're doing it in Rice County right now. We just applied for a federal fund for a very similar program, and the same type of funding can be accessed for Reno. So my hope would be down the road, we've, we've got kind of a stronger relationship with the entire county and are able to continue to work with them. But yeah, it's, it's coming out of the general line pretty much. There's, you know, one other large line being South Hutch that was underutilized. I want to add in that removal of, of unsafe structures is well within the parameters of the ARPA funding. I think there's, I'm confident there's plenty of communities that have intentionally used that money to tear down, you know, the big unsafe building. It's an opportunity right now in St. Elizabeth.
If this goes through, this board decided to make this change with you, what's the timeline on bringing down the St. Elizabeth and, and the process? Because you shared the process.
Yeah, absolutely. So I, yeah, if I, if I may, let me get to my details here. I was expecting this question. So just real quick, again, I want to be mindful of your time. Real quick backstory, Interfaith owned it for eight years. Prior to that, there were tenants living in a C1 zone building, kind of a misuse of a 55,000 square foot structure, but there's been a chain of owners. I'll jump forward to we've owned it, and it's, it's gotten much worse under our ownership. I take fault for that. But it wasn't without effort. We've tried, we, we've had multiple, you know, multiple reroutes and dead ends and in a number of things we've attempted. And we did, through that process, we did complete three Phase One environmental reviews paid for by Kansas Department of Health and Environment, as well as an engineered review of the structure before we applied for federal EPA funding two years ago in partnership with the county. Didn't receive the fund. Planned to reapply last fall, and in the meantime, we're, we're contacted by a local company looking to kind of scale up their abatement and restoration business. Agreed on a number. County and city were, were generous enough to, to help us cover those costs and the, we have full air clearance on the building now. All of the friable ACM is gone. If you go by that area, you'll notice a lot of the windows are just missing now. They took them out to, to package and, and remove the asbestos and the glazing on the windows. So very, very exposed and opened up right now, but all of that to say, we have final clearance. We've already filed the KDHE, the ASP10, that's a demolition notification, with our intent to start demolition September 9th of this year. So we've, we've got an executed contract with our chosen demolition contractor, and they were here Monday, did their work, their diligence work in talking to the, the Public Works and, you know, finding their location for concrete recycling, their routes. We've checked on water service and, you know, hydrant carts and that sort of thing. So security fencing is scheduled with this approval for use of funds. Like I said, we're under contract. Fencing will go up on the 9th. Equipment will be here that week and we'll start taking the building down.
Appreciate it. Any other questions?
Yeah, I really appreciate what you've done for Reno County with regards to and how quick you got things done and how many people you got involved in this. I really appreciate that. That was a huge project to put on and you handled it very well. I will say that I think in my standpoint from the county is that this program, this ARPA program that was allowed for housing is to improve the housing. Now, I know the project that you plan on doing with the, with the, that land when it's all cleaned up, but on the same hand, we allocated money for fix-up, cleanup, improve housing as it stands here now in the county. And to me, it looks to me like that if no, if, you've spent a pretty good amount of money already here from ARPA on, the way I understand it, on, on St. Elizabeth. While I appreciate the concept that you're looking at, to me, I feel that the money, if it's, if it's not allocated, it comes back to the county. And I feel that, that it should be used for what our original purpose was and not for demolition. And I think we could, we could, any money that's not spent could come back here and we could use it on our, on the projected county housing program with developers and use that money to build rather than for demolition, and that's my feelings.
Thank you, sir. If I could respond to that?
Yeah.
Appreciate that, Mr. Hirsch. I don't disagree. The, the primary intent of our original proposal was homeowner occupied rehab. We also had, as part of a priority list for both county and Hutchinson, we had other projects deemed appropriate, necessary, or identified. So there were, it was sectioned out, generally the, the bulk of the funding to be used for homeowner occupied rehab, but as I mentioned previous, we've done a number of demolitions as we determined that was what was best for the neighborhood. I know this is at a different scale, but I also want us to be mindful of this opportunity. If not for this fund, you know, no guarantees that we continue to chase dead end. that we continue to chase dead-end options for getting this resolved. But it's been an ongoing problem. I suspect if we hand this deed off to somebody else, I'm sure there's somebody out there just crazy enough to take the deed to that building. Likely, they're not going to have any more resources than we do. So, you know, I appreciate what you're saying. I do believe, again, we're going to hit our project counts that we set out to hit. And due to that efficiency and kind of, you know, focus on the homeowner work, we do have the opportunity here to move some money towards St. Elizabeth. But the total investment for the abatement and demolition is about eight hundred thousand less than we would have originally projected to spend on abatement and demolition. So, I feel like this is a very solid use of the fund. And drive around that area, you've got a neighborhood there that could swing either direction right now. And if that building doesn't get cleared and that site cleaned up, the desirability of that neighborhood is going to continue to move the wrong direction. So, I appreciate, appreciate where you're coming from, Mr. Hurst.
Mr. Freezin, do you have something?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks, Clint. Appreciate all the updates. I did have a question, a specific to the contract on the demolition. I know there were a few different in-county contractor bidders, and it looks like, from what I saw, we awarded, or you awarded the contract to an outside, outside of the county bidder. The question came up, and this is hearsay, but, you know, there was concern that the specs on how the project was to be performed weren't clear, and the low bidder, again, hearsay, was suggesting that some of the material wouldn't be removed from the site and pushed into, pushed into a hole. And I think, two comments on that, you know, one, it would be good if we could get confirmation if that's the case. And two, if it is, I think, at least I would be concerned that we're using county money to abate a location that's, that we want to develop, and then kind of kicking the can down the road and not having a developable lot. So, you know, I guess the third question is, if it's not being, if it is being moved off-site, where is it going? And are they planning on paying landfill fees for that if it's going there?
Yeah, thank you for that. So, yeah, so we did release a full RFP, June tenth of this year, and received five proposals back. Three of those were local. I met all five of the contractors on site that submitted proposals. We went through the building. Hadn't been through the building like that in a long time. But it didn't scare any of them away. They were all very excited for the opportunity to bid. I would say, with the exception of one local contractor, this was a much larger scale of a project. And so, everyone had concern about how they baked the landfill fees into their proposal. And so, I think that may have been where we got such a variance in bid numbers. But I'll let you guys may, hopefully you received the spreadsheet. But there's a four hundred thousand dollar variance from low bid to high bid, and I believe a lot of that is based on kind of estimates of what those landfill fees would look like. My two low bids that came in, both have had intent to recycle all of the concrete that they can. Both of them discussed setting up a crush plant on-site, which requires a special use permit with the city of Hodge, and then selling that aggregate off-site. And so, yeah, that was consistent on both of my low bids. I will say, one of those contractors gave quite a bit more detail on the infill process, including, you know, how they'd roll it out and how they compacted. Just a lot more detail, and that individual does earthmoving. That means that's what he does. And so, he certainly knew that. In my opinion, the most experienced in terms of urban demolition and controlled commercial demolition, the most experienced contractor was my low bid. And I called references, I spoke to a couple of school districts where they had removed large high schools and they rebuilt on the site. None of my bids, my contractors intended to backfill the pit with the gravel.
So, I mean, can you, that's helpful. Can you confirm that all of the material will be removed off-site?
Correct. The contractor that we executed an agreement with here, that's not a local contractor, within the state of Kansas, but not local, they're planning to, they're, at this point, they're not planning to set up a recycle plant on-site. They're planning to move all the concrete to one of the local gravel pits to recycle. They'll pull all the metal for recycling. They've actually got a buyer for the red brick. Apparently, old red brick is in hot demand, so they've got a contractor that comes in and cleans the brick and resells it, reuses it. What they do expect to go to the county landfill is all the debris, the wood. There's not a lot of wood in that building. It's mainly steel and concrete. But they project or estimate less than fifteen thousand dollars in tonnage fees, based on what they're going to take to the landfill. I do believe some of these bids had, you know, worked a hundred thousand dollars into their bid. So, I'm fairly confident this contractor will keep most of it out of our landfill. He estimates a six-week project start to finish.
I mean, given this is federal money through the county, would it be prudent just to ensure that they have the right kind of contract in place to make sure, you know, like the environmental things and, you know, I would, like, Clint, everything you said sounds fine to me. The one thing I would say is that, given the amount of money the county's going to spend, I'd like assurance that they have a contract that ensures that the contractors, you know, removing it all off-site, disposing of it properly.
So, when we started the ARPA process with Interfaith and the other partners, we have a master ARPA agreement that requires them to follow any and all guidelines for ARPA, and it gives us a clawback in case there is some audit problem. So, that's been, and that's been going very well with Interfaith. That hasn't been a problem. But that would apply to, if you guys did make a change, that would apply to this too, where, and I believe their process, as I understand it for this bidding, is going to meet all those requirements. But if we came up with something where it was an issue with treasury, we have clawbacks, and we have safeguards in there. In terms of the environmental, I mean, it's in the city of Hodge, so it's not our permit. But your demolition permit, probably, I haven't seen it, but I imagine it says something like, at the end of the demolition, things have to be cleaned up to city standards.
Yeah, the process will be inspected by the city. Our contract includes abiding with EPA NESHAP regulations, which, that being in a dense residential area, it has to be a moist or wet operation, so there's not dust. They're not planning on imploding the building and creating a dust cloud. They're going to start chewing it off from the corner, but they're going to hold down the dust. Mr. Freezin, I feel like, I like what you're saying, your guidance. Or if we're going to invest in this, we need to build ready site when they're gone, so that we can move ahead on redevelopment plans. We don't necessarily need...
Would you, would you be okay if Patrick just reviewed your agreement? And if they're, like, all I'm looking for is that it's kind of clean dirt when it's done, and that all of the environmental rules and city rules are followed, and that there's some indemnity for us and probably should be for Interfaith, just to make sure all that's in there. So, this is all on the contractor?
Yeah, that makes sense, because, I mean, when we started this project in the ARPA, it was all about building houses and remodeling. So, demolition wasn't something we built in specifically. So, it makes sense that that's a contingency or addition to amendment. I would, we could work on that and triple-check everything.
I mean, if, Mr. Chair, as long as the rest of the commission's okay, just, I think, just getting an email from Patrick saying it looks good, or they've amended something, is all I'm asking for.
Yep, I agree with that.
Okay. Thanks, Clint.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'll get that to you, Patrick. Are you asking for that before we would take action?
I'd move to approve a contingent on the one review item. I don't know if we're approving these individually, or if it's just one big package. Okay. Okay, so I'd move to approve contingent on council's approval.
Do I hear a second? I'll second that. Any discussion?
So, I had a question, and you've addressed this in the past, but for people watching, you know, they probably don't want to go back a year and a half to find the video. What's the plans for the site after the demolition?
Yeah, so for the last couple of years, we've had kind of a concept redevelopment plan, which is two-story walk-ups. Design-wise, I think it's a little out of the box for Hutch, but it may work very well in that kind of corridor, Monroe corridor. Certainly would be a visual kind of stimulus for that area. More recently, through another byproduct of ARPA and doing a lot of work, it's opened up conversations with some of our big employers in the area, more conversation about workforce housing, and we all know that there's a continued need for that. So, our intent would be to redevelop it with homebuyer units, what that final master plan looks like, if we can get under an option for the additional land and the mirror building. I mean, those are all part of the conversation. We would like to see that whole block, you know, redeveloped. But, yeah, some really solid conversations with some of our major employers in the area, and our intent would be to sit down with some of the housing developers in town and see if they would like to participate, partner.
And would these be rentals, or would these be for sale?
Homebuyer. You actually kind of reminded me, I should tell the commission that, you know, currently that property is assessed at land value only, so you guys are getting eight hundred and fifty dollars a year in property taxes. Our redevelopment plans would be five million plus in assessed property tax, or property value, I should say. So, it's, yeah, great outcome. We have every intent of redeveloping that site.
Mr. Hurst?
I have no doubt that in time, that can be developed. But that's all looking at the future. And we have some almost shovel-ready projects available right now. And I just, I just still feel that we need to be looking at, I realize there was revisions in this, that we can make revisions. But I still feel that there's no definite plans, and we have other definite plans set up. And I feel that this money could be used better other ways. And the city needs to step up for this project, rather than just the county.
Thank you, sir. Could I elaborate on that slightly? If not approved for this revision, we would intend to utilize the entire fund as originally proposed. I don't foresee money being, coming back for reallocation.
Well, that's good. I didn't gather that from the information I had. So, maybe I missed it. Although, I know I made the second motion. I will speak here just a little bit, driving by that every day, with no interest for anybody to take that building and what it is doing to the neighborhood, the unsafe nature of it, and the constant maintenance. I personally'd like to see it come down and move forward with development in the future. It may be a while to see that, but I think it's going to be a major improvement in town to get that off that lot and down. And so, that's just, that's kind of my two cents worth. I know that you couldn't really transfer that to anybody. At this point, they're not going to do anything with it, and they wouldn't have before. I'm quite surprised, to be honest with you, we haven't had some vagrants or found somebody in there that we didn't want to find, in a, you know, I'll just say, had somebody end up dead in there or something.
Agreed.
And I'm thrilled that that didn't happen. But, you know, it needs to be on the ground. So, that's just my feelings.
I fully agree. I have seen in the last few weeks, you know, unfortunately, some of our unhoused population kind of moving that direction. I've had conversations with individuals that are definitely spending their nights in that building. And I think, as we're all aware, we've had, you know, a couple, or at least ten years of young people getting in that building, vandalism and whatever health issues they're encountering by going into that building. So, yeah, I agree with everything that's being said. It's a shift on some of the funds and what our priorities are, but it's a big hitter project for Hodge to get that gone and move ahead with trying to redevelop that site.
Any further comments?
Yeah, so I'm going to frame this vote and see if you think this is accurate. So, basically, what we're voting on is, you know, if we vote no, then you would continue to help people in the county with smaller rehabs to their house. And if we vote yes, then we're going to help the people in the St. Elizabeth area have a better neighborhood with the potential for future development there. Is that, am I framing that correctly? Does that seem like...
Pretty accurate, I think.
Yeah.
I think that's, generally, that's it. Yeah, I might, depending on what terminology you want to use, but neighborhood stabilization certainly comes to mind.
Okay.
No further comments? Let's take a roll call.
Commissioner Hurst?
No.
Commissioner Freezin?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Whitezel?
No.
Commissioner Bogner?
I'm going to say yes. Motion passes three to two.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Clint. Appreciate that. Does anybody else need a break for a minute? This will be a while.
Yeah.
Okay. We're going to take a quick ten-minute recess. We don't need that. We'll come back. Just between, we've got someone else presenting and then going into budget, we probably ought to do that.
That they would put a lift station in, which it's a sewer lift station. It's not in every subdivision, it's in few subdivisions. But they do have them, and basically what it does, when you have a sewer and the sewer pipe is starting to rise and to get grade out away from the subdivision, we have to elevate. We bring the sewer in and then we elevate it. And then we put it on into the city sewer and it drains out. So that's what, if I just call it a sewer lift station, that's what that does. And we've only put one other of those in, and it was on Seventeenth Street over by Cow Creek. And I think at that time, that was a long time ago, at that time. It was, I don't know, sixty-five, seventy thousand dollars at that time. So I was a little bit surprised at the cost that came in, but I think it was, I can look through here, but I think it's north of three hundred thousand to get that put in. So by doing that, we did add special assessments to the lots, which I thought a lot about how to do that. And the best way I felt was to go ahead and put it out on special assessments, because it would be paid for by the people that live there over time. And by doing the RHID and some different things that we've put together on this project, which I do appreciate your helping us with the RHID as well as the city. But that lift station costs, if we spread it out over twenty years, I think it comes in about twenty, twenty-five dollars a month. So I look at when I'm selling a house, I'm looking at that as being, I don't really tell them that their specials are gonna be, let's say, two hundred or twenty-two hundred dollars a year, which is about what specials are in some of the subdivisions if we didn't have the RHID. So it actually gets it down to where we put it down to a monthly fee. And so when you get it down to twenty-five dollars a month, set up over twenty years, it's pretty affordable for our buyer, and that's what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to get these homes through the grants and different things that we've got as affordable as we can get them. We've built MIH homes in different cities. I've said Marion, Lyons, we've built them in, we're building eight, about ten of them in McPherson right now. And so we got MIH approved for this. And the problem that we're having is that we still, by the time we got our bids in, we only had one bid on this project, and it was way over what we had originally projected on a, on engineer's estimate, was, which was under a million and a half. And it had continued to grow as they completed their engineer drawings further. Anyway, when it went to bid, they were quite a ways over. And the city has had capped what they were looking at agreeing to spend on what the taxes that the people will be paying on these. So when I saw that the city was able to come to the county and get assistance in a subdivision that they haven't started yet, I thought, well, maybe that would be an opportunity for me to come in here and talk with you folks and see if there would be any assistance for the Plum Creek subdivision, because right now, you know, we're gonna have to take those extra expenses that we have and spread them out over the lots that we're building on. And so it's gonna increase our lot cost. So what I'm trying to do is keep my lot cost down, because the MIH grants and the grants that we have can't be used for infrastructure. So they could only be used for housing. So we are able to discount the housing, but we're not able to discount anything on the lots. And so that's what I'm basically here for. We've had some conversation yesterday with the chamber and the city, and it was a pretty good meeting. And I think when we all walked out of there, we were all a little smarter than when we walked into that meeting about these things, the different things. And so basically, that's why I'm here. So I don't have a dollar amount. I'm here just asking if the availability is there. I know what I maybe, you know, I put a price in here on what we're over, but, you know, I could only ask for, you know, I don't have a hard number. I'm just here to answer questions and see if you all are interested in working with me on this project.
Would it be appropriate for you, maybe hold on just a minute, Mr. Strong, to share the resolution where that information, whether that is a possibility or not?
The, yes. The resolution passed at the last county commission meeting for residential housing growth does state that Reno County policy that municipalities and developers should be the primary source of housing development, but the county may provide financial assistance for housing development as it is a critical component of economic development. And municipalities and developers may make proposals to Reno County for financial assistance. And if approved, the county and the municipality or developer shall enter into an agreement. So the resolution that you passed at the last meeting does allow for any city, municipality, or developer to make a proposal and for you guys to approve if you choose so.
Okay, appreciate that.
I do not have a formal, you know, yeah, proposal. I'm here to see if it's something that we maybe could turn in a proposal and explain. The other thing I'm here to do is answer any questions that you may have on subdivision and housing. And again, the meeting yesterday took longer than I was thinking it was gonna take. But anyway, I do think that, you know, it seems to be on the top of everyone's list as far as concerns with the city.
Okay.
And the county, excuse me, the city and the county.
Commissioner Friesen tonight. Commissioner Friesen, do you have a question?
No, Mr. Strong, thanks for being here. Appreciate this project you're working on, because it's one of the, it is the, it's in the top three priorities that the county's focused on right now. So I also appreciate your comments related to competition from the government and, you know, saw your comments at the city council meeting. So, and I think you did review our last meeting, and there were a lot of good comments related to feedback from us to the city on our kind of flagging concerns related to the government being involved in efforts that we think the private sector could work on. Saying all that, I think these are two distinct projects in two massively different parts of Hutchinson and the county and two different school districts. It seems like they're both very complementary to the city and the county. And I hope you would reconsider that these are directly competing. In fact, they're, I think they're both fundamentally needed for the growth of our housing stock. Having said that, I think our priority, in my opinion, should be to get you started on this as soon as possible. And I would support, how much did we provide to the city for their project?
Two hundred and eighty-five thousand.
Okay. I mean, if we can find a way to provide some level of similar funding to your project, if you would provide a commitment for a start date for your project, I think it would be worth the county's investment. Because as I said, I mean, we've identified, like nationally, we have a housing crisis. I mean, I think in the county, we have a housing crisis. And so this is an effort, I think, where the county should partner and leverage all of your investment with our own. So I'm supportive of some sort of support for your project, conditioned on the commitment that we get started. Because I know it's been a, I know projects like this take time. But if you can commit on a breaking ground date, I would be happy to support some funding.
I think we have that.
Okay. Commissioner Hirst.
Yeah, to go along, and I agree with Commissioner Friesen. When I looked at the amount of money that we were allocated with regard to the city of Hutchinson, if they did thirty-three units, that amounted to seventy-eight hundred and fifteen dollars per unit. If they did twenty-four units, that amounted to ten thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars per unit. That was in our contract. So, you know, some, I just bring that up because my thought would be that at some point in time, we needed to relook at this to look at per-unit incentive-type programs. And I had one other question, and maybe I shouldn't even be asking this, but.
Go right ahead.
Did you recommend in your original plan to do sidewalks?
Actually, they're drawn in the, in the drawings. But they are there because we went through, it's been probably, I don't know, seven, eight, ten years ago, we didn't have a sidewalk program for the city on subdivisions. So I was working with the city to try to do this, and the young professionals got involved in that. And they showed up for the meetings that, and we had a city commissioner that wanted to really want to have sidewalks on both sides of the street. And so I proposed that we do like we've done in other committees. We develop in McPherson. McPherson has them where we put them on, I think it's the east side and the north side. So every block has a sidewalk. And the city may be open to us being able to go back and do that. Because, but it is designed to have sidewalks in front of each home. But there's some issues there that I, I don't know if you want to hear all of it, but they have us planting trees over power lines and underground cabling, which, you know, includes the internet, the telephone, you know, the company, the gas company, the electric company, and then we put a sidewalk on top of it, and we put a tree on top of that. And that's in the program that the city has now. All I'm asking, and I'm not, I haven't even asked yet, but I do think that we should reevaluate that, because I think it could change. And we just put a sidewalk on one side of the street. So a lot of everybody wants to have a sidewalk in front of their house, scooping snow, people walking dogs that stop and do their business, you know, mowing and edging. They don't always want, they don't always want to have a sidewalk. But we do want pedestrians, and especially in a neighborhood like this, where we put the sidewalks, because I've been in communication with the city, they'll be able to walk to school. We'll have a path back to a sidewalk that takes them to school, so they can walk to school. Now, they can't walk home, because Bueller, now I don't know if they still have this, this has been six months ago, a year ago, but, you know, they can't let the kids go out and go home without a parent. So their parents would have to stop and pick them up, but I think their daycare stays open till five-thirty, six o'clock. So their parents could have the kids walk to school, or they could drop them off at school, they could walk them to school. And then at the end of the day, they can walk up to get their kids and walk them home. And that's the beauty of that subdivision. We're right next to the school. There's a hike and bike trail there. It's got a lot of amenities for young families. I don't know if you noticed, but they're also, you know, the hike and bike trails over on, right there at Kissewa Village and things, and they're getting ready to build a new trailhead there.
I was just curious, because in today's environment and social, I see other developments that don't have sidewalks. And I know properties have in town, that's.
Yes. And I believe, excuse me, I believe the city may listen to us at this time to go back, because, you know, like, some people don't want city sidewalks. They're very expensive to build.
And maintain when you plant trees.
Any other questions, maybe I could answer for you? I appreciate your time.
John?
So in your talks with the cities, did the, and the city manager's here, so he may be able to provide incentives as well. So for the project they're proposing, they did like things like waive tap fees and things of that. Were they willing to offer the same sort of things to you?
Tell me that one more time, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. So like, in the project we approved for the city, the city kicked in some things, like they're gonna waive tap fees, and I don't know all the specifics, but basically, they were gonna help to lower the specials as well. Were they willing to make the same sort of deal with you?
I can't say, they worked with us on the RHID. And from that, the city would have to answer what other, they may have been able to pull some strings. But one other thing that we are working on with them right now, I did request that the city would do the inspections, because we still have a lot of expenses. Even though we're gonna get some money, we still pay for underground electric, and we still pay for gas. Now, we're gonna have to come out of pocket for that, but we do get that back as the houses sell, as long as the houses sell. But Evergy just recently has changed their, how they do things. And so it's interesting, because nowadays, those transformers, you know, it takes a long time to get a transformer. They think they found enough to maybe get our project or half our project done. But transformers for subdivisions like this, they're over a year out to get those here. Just information in general for you. But anyway, they did agree to possibly come and do the inspections, why the sewer line's going in and the water line's going in, and the street compaction and all that type of stuff. If there's manipulating fly ash, that type of thing. They will have an inspector there. We've done that on another one here in town, and it saved us some money. I don't know, they're not gonna do it. I've asked for a cost, and I haven't been able to get one yet. But, you know, it's hard to project with those, because they don't do that every day. My end goal, to be frank with, my end goal is to be as affordable as I can. That is our goal. I mean, this is for young families. I've built these all over. And our biggest buyers are teachers, firemen. I built for two firemen, three firemen in McPherson, a couple of policemen, two, three teachers. And in other areas, the same thing. Inman, we did that, we did the same thing there. I built for sheriffs and things there. But we see that, it's not a low-income project, it's a moderate income. So they, you know, they're working. And it depends on how many people are in their family is, get, are able to buy those houses with the discounts and things. Discounts, or whatever you wanna call it.
Well, I'm quite familiar with the work in Rice County, as well as McPherson County, through the people that are involved with SCED.
Yes.
And there's been a good projects all the way around, and I've seen it work here in Hutch, so.
Yep. I'm just sorry it's taken us so long. Engineering and things like that, it's just, just things that happen.
Any questions for Jim yet? I would personally, if we was to move forward and do something, I'd personally like to see something drafted up myself before we do anything. And I like the idea of per-unit reimbursements if we do something, if the board would take action to do that. So we have some kind of a guideline. Right now, we really don't have a great guideline. We could contribute, but if it isn't equitable, we could have problems down the road with other, you know, if others would apply to this.
Yeah. I guess how I saw this happening, which we moved very quickly last meeting, obviously, because we had some stuff going. But I guess what I would, how I see it maybe is if there's a general consensus, if not a vote, if there's interest in the commission for staff to work with Mr. Strong on drafting a proper development agreement that we would bring back to you guys to decide if you liked it to approve. I guess that's how I would see the process. And then we would replicate that process if they ever came up again. I don't know if today, if you'd be approving something, I don't know if there's enough details for you guys to really say this is what we agreed to. And I wouldn't want to put you in that position. But I think if you want me to, if you want staff, Randy and I to work with him, we certainly could draw something.
I sort of maybe would like you to, but Ron, you got a comment?
Yeah, and I would personally like to see you at least discuss with regard and look at it from the standpoint of, we've made this program to help developers get started, my intention. I think that we can agree on that. And do we need to cap this at X amount of units? Or something to look at, okay?
I, yeah, you know, there's some things in the development agreement I can draft, but like, I really just need guidance from the board, and it's new for all of us, I think. But like, what kind of things, caps? And I think the, you know, what's your program? Like, what we would like to focus this on? Randy, would you?
Yeah, we would also probably want to look at minimums. Like, if we're going to offer developers or municipalities housing, you know, assistance with this, would it be a certain number of houses that have to be built before they qualify for county money? Or is it for even one, you know, one infill? So we will look at other areas. I'll probably reach out and talk with, I know Deborah's here, but Deborah made some good comments yesterday at the meeting that Mr. Strong commented about, about, you know, looking at a policy. So I'll probably talk with the chamber also to get their insight.
Commissioner Weiselman.
So just a couple of things while I have your ear, because I don't seldom come to the county commission. But a couple of things that we did talk about yesterday was, in our meeting with the city and the chamber and the county. I thought it was a good, a good meeting, because I think everybody, like I said, come out of there a little bit smarter. But I think, I don't want to start another group of people that are contracted. But at least have some open communication with different people about subdivisions and what the needs are and things. We have a lot of businesses that think that they need houses for employees, but it's kind of hard to just go up and start building ten houses and then not have a, you know, hoping that some business is gonna hire, and we're gonna be able to sell those ten houses fast. And so I think that that, some kind of an, you know, I think they do have a housing commission, but a housing commission for the city, I don't know what they call it, I'm sure I've been there before. But they could talk a little bit more, and especially with developers. Because a lot of the developers in Hutchinson are, you know, like, just like me, they're all getting older. We don't have a lot of young guys coming on, and that needs to be looked at. And the other thing was that, when I hear people tell me that, oh, you know, Salina's doing so much better than Hutchinson. And I said, well, you know, Salina, the city may be having more people, or may have more people than Hutchinson. But when you look at, when you look at Reno County versus Saline County, we're far ahead of them. And I would tell you, I do think a lot of that is because the people in Hutchinson, Kansas, are capable of being able to build in the country on a few acres, which I think they've got it down to two acres now, which I think is about forty acres in McPherson. I don't have a clue what it is in Salina. But we always are gonna have people that not always, all your building permits are gonna be just in the city of Hutchinson. So you really, in my mind, I think you need to really consider the county and the city. Because we do have a lot of people live, I mean, I think they go more north than any direction, but there are a lot of people north of Hutchinson, and they continue to build. Anyway, I appreciate your time. If there's no other questions?
Do you have a question?
Yeah, so, well, I guess this is more of a comment on my thoughts on the matter. So I voted against this originally. You know, my thought was that we don't need to be taking taxpayer funds and giving them directly to builders. And I vote, that's why I voted against it for what the city asked. I mean, I think tax abatements and things like that are more appropriate, because then it's not anything that's costing us money, but it is something that's saving, you know, the people that buy the homes money. That being said, I think if we do open something up, there is a chance that there's more people that want it than money that we have allocated towards. So I think there needs to be a way to decide which projects to accept and how much to do. I mean, because they run, run what, we spent about nine thousand, you know, depending on how many houses they build, about nine thousand dollars a house. And I thought that that was very excessive for, you know, for the money that we have to spend on one project. And so, I mean, there needs to be some work done. I probably won't vote for it in the end anyway, just because I don't think that taking taxpayer money and giving it to a developer is necessarily the appropriate role of government. But I think we need to have some sort of like bidding process as well for, you know, if there's more developers, then there is money.
Appreciate that. Who's you done?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll let you out.
Okay.
I appreciate that. And John, I think you talking minimums, Randy, you know, for development. I think it would be pretty muddied up and cluttered up if we did, you know, infill one projects here and there, without looking at some major development to help. And so that's some of the stuff I hope you guys would structure for us, to show us, would be some dollar amounts, what would work one way or the other that we could talk about in the future, and certainly who would qualify. And we can always bend that here and there, but I'd like to see that before we take any kind of action. So I think it's that kind of what the general consensus is today, for us to have some feedback from staff to help us draft some of that, or.
Well. Go ahead.
Don, go ahead.
Well, I'd be for the feedback. The biggest concern I had, two concerns when this first came up, were twofold, just what's happening. For the amount of money we've got, we're two weeks in and we could have spent it all in the first two projects. And how do you make it fair and equitable, as John was saying? The other thing is, is it's not available to everybody. It's available to certain individuals and certain municipalities. Mr. Strong alluded to the fact that all the building that goes on within the county, I'm in an area in my district where there is a heck of a lot of building going on, similar to what he's talking about north here. And to not give any incentives in these unincorporated areas, people are calling me and telling me, well, you know, nobody helped me build my sewer, nobody helped me build my water source. And that's what this is going to, so now I'm paying taxes on my house to subsidize a housing project in one of the cities. I mean, yeah, when you look at it like that, there's probably a legitimate concern there. Nobody helped me on my project, but I'm being forced to help subsidize somebody else's project. So, but I truly believe it's here. Decisions have to be made, and we've gotta get some structure into this thing. Because there just isn't that kind of money around to spend it all in two projects. And that same fund has already got some money committed.
That's what I can really say, yeah.
So something's gotta get squared away here, so we know where we're at, what we're doing on both sides. Contractor needs to know what's available to him and exact numbers. The taxpayer gotta know where his money's going. And right now, I'm not finding a lot of people. And you can carry it on to the people in the city who've traditionally paid for it through their specials, along with the unincorporated who paid for it out of their own pockets when they build a home. So, you know, there's a few things to weigh out here and get squared away before we take another step. But I do appreciate the thought of getting together, trying to address these issues. At least get it that far.
Commissioner Weiselman?
Yeah, and I asked Randy this, but I guess to make it part of the public comment, I did ask if there was any way to reconsider the agreement with the city of Hutchinson that we had already made.
Yes, you had mentioned that, and I explained that the contractor agreement had already been signed and approved. And going back on that would legally, it might be, and I could, Patrick had answered legally, but I think it would set a really bad precedent about other actions that you guys take each, each time you make a decision, and what that would mean for delays in executing agreements.
Further comments?
Well, I think we need to take some action at some point soon. I appreciate the points of wanting to be fair, but I'm not aware of any other shovel-ready projects in the county of this magnitude that are working to solve. Is it our, it's our second priority, right? Priority one was childcare, priority two is housing. Like, we don't have a lot to offer here at the government level, other than some taxpayer funding. I appreciate the points related to, you know, using that funding. that funding, that the taxpayers' money wisely, but I always, if we're going to do it, I really like projects where we're leveraging private funding and other grants and so forth. And so I think that meets this, and we have to do something. Otherwise, we might as well just take it off the priority list. We're not going to take action on actually moving the needle on housing, and please tell me how we do that besides putting money into the market to jumpstart it. We need to do something. So if we're going to instruct staff to do something, I would like us to get that back in the next meeting, and we can all vote. If you don't want to do it, say no, and let's just make a decision and get this project going.
When are you going, you'll be here the next meeting?
Yeah, it's the second meeting in September, I'll be absent.
Because I'd like us all to be present. Mr. Hurst?
You know, regarding funding, and I think we'd go a long ways if we knew when projects were going to start, because some of it might be 2026, some of it might be 2024, some of it might be 2025. So if the county is going to look at, which we already are, looking at some kind of kickstart, then we need to be able to plan ahead as much as possible, so that if Mr. Strawn's project is going to start 2024, City's is going to start in 2025, you know, or 2026, then we can appropriately plan funding out of the Economic Development Fund. Does that sound reasonable?
Yes, because as soon as we have an agreement, we've basically encumbered the money. But yeah, if we know before you guys make a decision, if we know when it's going to be shovel-ready, when the projects will start, we can set up the appropriate budget and encumbrances at that time, so we know how much other money we have, because this line item and the reserves that we have is all, is, was primarily set up for, well, economic development, and that's usually manufacturing, industry, not really housing. So it is, does kind of change the, what we do with that money. But we have other issues that will come up, working with the chamber, and as they bring businesses in, other needs for that, those line items or that reserve fund. But you're right, if we know in advance, or we kind of have calendars of when things are going to be ready to be spent, or when our money's going to be needed, if it's reimbursed, when the houses will be completed, so then we would reimburse per house, or if it's upfront money, like on the city, some of the preliminary work, when they're going to start that, then we could budget or plan our finances better.
And also, if it's budgeted, then the developer can put it on his balance sheet.
Well, I think it's certainly conversations after you guys get something tentatively outlined for us that we could have in the future here, but I don't think we move extremely fast. Mary Grace, did you have something you'd like to add to that?
Yeah, appreciate it. Mary Grace Clements, I do appreciate the county taking this on as an issue. This is an issue, a systemic issue within our whole region. We are in the process, we've partnered with the county, the city, and the city of South Hutch to do our housing assessment. Those results should be coming in at any time. What we do know is we'll have that data, that's going to help drive things. A couple facts that we do know, that historically, over the past year to year, we're negative 11 housing units over the past 10, every year for decades, we're negative 11, meaning we're losing more inventory than we are putting out front. The other fact that we know is that we currently have 42 teachers who are working in the USD 308 school district that do not live here. So they're taking, they're earning tax dollars here and taking them and spending them wherever they're living in the other municipalities. That's a problem that's not about what revenue and what industry we're going to bring in, that is a systemic problem we currently have. We need the housing for those reasons. We need these levels of tools in the tool belt for developers to continue to drive that. It's not about, hopefully we'll get an industry and we'll have, need houses. We need the houses now. We've needed them for year over year over year. That's putting us in this position. The 42 housing teachers, we haven't looked at Nickerson, we haven't looked at Bueller, we haven't looked at any of the other school districts, that's just 308.
Right.
So this is workforce housing, this is similar to what Mr. Strawn is trying to build. Those projects are separate projects to help enhance, to remedy the situation we're currently in, the systemic problem that we have. So I don't want to lose sight of the fact that spending the dollars to create future tax dollars for our taxpayers is what we're trying to accomplish here. That's what we need. We need people to live here, we need people to spend their dollars here, and that's what we're missing. So that's, I appreciate and recognize how difficult these unique changes are, and I commend you for taking them on and challenge it in front of you. So I appreciate that.
I appreciate your comments. I would hope that, John, hold on just a second, I would hope that if we develop something, decide to go forward with this, that it would, with inside the city limits of Hutchinson, there would be some kind of a partnership, that we wouldn't be the only ones contributing Reno County tax dollars into this community, because it very likely could reach outside of this community. I wouldn't expect you to spend money in Nickerson and Haven and those areas, but I would assume you would be a partner agency with us.
The city of Hutchinson is Reno County. We are, we are one, and we are here to work together, we're open for business, and we want it to get to, yes, we want to work with developers, we want to work to get the housing that we desperately need. Mr. Weitzel, did you have a question for me?
Yeah, so, and you may not be, know the answer to this, but is the city willing to do for developers like Mr. Strawn and other developers, the same thing, the same things they're doing with the, the housing development that came to us last meeting, as far as like waiving fees and things like that?
Yep.
Enrique, go ahead, go ahead. Mike, just state your name, who you are.
Enrique Vegas, city manager, city of Hutchinson. For Mr. Strawn's particular development here, that would not be eligible for the tax waivers, because it's not an infill project. So the project that we're pursuing in the more central south side of the city is infill. This is not, so.
How about future projects? Would they be, would those sorts of incentives be available for that, or is it just for this one project?
No, it's been, it's been a longstanding incentive for infill development, so.
Okay, thank you.
But that might be something you and the board could look at in the future? Not, I'm just throwing it out there.
Yeah, potential.
Infill, because the water system's already there, it's easier to wave.
Yeah, it's a lot easier to develop.
But I think with the RHID and other incentives that the city is offering for new developments, that's kind of equivalent, or they're actually probably giving maybe more incentives.
We could get that conversation.
And I would say too, just to address the heart of the policy as it, as it was presented at that time, that it, in evaluating RHID or MIH or any other tax breaks for housing incentives, there's also the NRP that exists in the city as well, but that's south of 11th. And so that, that doesn't cover the entire city. And so you see there's pockets or holes within the tool system, the economic tools that we have available to get housing off of the ground, to help developers like Mr. Strawn and others, because we need housing. And so in evaluating, how can we continue to further enhance the tools that we have, Randy and I worked together on coming up with something that can be used, that can still be layered with RHID, MIH, NRP, et cetera. And so it's just really to help not only Hutchinson, in this particular case, but anyone in Reno County that so chooses. Obviously, there are other things that you all need to consider as a governing body, as to make that equitable. But that was the heart of why we were doing this. It was not to go out of our way to be controversial or start competition, because that's really not what this was. Anyone locally can participate in the program that we're doing. And as a matter of fact, the city is going to be offering local preference for the local developers and builders to participate in what we're trying to do here. So I just wanted to at least get back to the heart of why we were even talking about this to begin with. And I can stand for any questions that you may have for me.
Mr. Hurst?
Your definition of infill housing is a little different than what I've heard infill housing as being. Infill housing is when there's houses on each side, and the water and sewer are already there. It's, it's not put in water and sewer to provide for 25 houses. I just, I just got a new definition of infill housing, I guess.
Any other comments? Okay. Thank you, Enrique, appreciate it. I appreciate you guys coming forward. So we're directing you, I guess, at this point, kind of consensus to, to bring back something to us to look at with some options. Everybody okay with that? Okay, all right. Well, moving along, let's go to items eight. Appreciate those that were here for the conversation. Revenue neutral rate and budget hearing at Reno County, 2025 budget for the purpose of hearing and answering objections of taxpayers related to the purpose use of all funds and amount of ad valorem tax and revenue neutral rate for the proposed use of all funds and the amount of ad valorem tax for Reno County 2025 budget. And so we now will officially open that hearing to anybody that might have comment or anything on that, of that nature. Anyone here for that? Sure. Come forward, state your name and who you're with.
Sparkle Fadeley, Reno County Farmers Market. So we, you've been giving us money for our musicians for the last couple of years. We've dealt with the Hutch Rec, and then they've turned it over to us dealing with you guys directly. And I had some testimonials here from my musicians. I wanted to read a couple to those, you guys. Writing to express our deep concern over the proposed budget cuts that would eliminate funding for live performances at our local farmers market. As a musician and member of the community, I cannot overstate the importance of maintaining and supporting these cultural events. The Reno County Farmers Market is a vibrant atmosphere enhanced by live music. It's a place to buy fresh produce, cornerstone of our community's identity, and a key factor in what makes our county an attractive place to live, especially for young families. The combination of local produce and local art creates a unique enriching experience. One, fosters a sense of community and belonging. Two, supports both local farmers and artists. Three, provides a family-friendly environment for weekend activities, attracts visitors from neighboring areas, increasing tourism, enhancing the overall quality of life in our county. A thriving art scene, including live music at community events like our farmers market, is crucial for attracting and retaining young families who seek a vibrant cultural environment. By cutting funding for live performances, we risk diminishing the very qualities that make our county special. The farmers market, with its blend of local produce and live music, is a pillar of our community experience. It's a place where neighbors meet, children are exposed to arts, and our local culture flourishes. I urge you to reconsider these budget cuts and recognize the immense value that performances bring to our farmers market and community as a whole. Sincerely, Adam Pounds. I have two points. Maintaining our performing arts is important in Hutchinson. If we want to maintain the vibrancy we have and continue growing, in today's technological world, we would be competing with Wichita and the other towns for human talent, moving to the area from the other places for jobs. Do we want to be able to offer a good set of attractions to the public or not? If not, we will just turn into a bedroom community. Incoming talent with otherwise, will otherwise live in Wichita and commute. Our residential and business tax basis will erode. The cost of maintaining musical instruments and amplification equipment is enormous. For example, it costs $90 to purchase one cable connecting the amplifier and speaker. Wear and tear mandates that we continue making these expenditures if we want to keep performing. Ron Worth, Hutchinson. I have multiple, I don't know if you guys want me to read all of them. I believe my media manager had sent each one of you the email with the presentation of all our musicians that we're able to communicate. That money that you guys give goes directly to local musicians. It doesn't go anywhere else to the farmers market, it's creating a job for them. So we have, we have a really great market, and if you haven't been down there, please come down. We run May through October. When my treasurer and I were here in May, I know it was brought to looking at other options for funding, and we run an event from May to October. So we do have an economic impact in the county. We feel like we do bring a lot to downtown of Hutchinson. So we, we would like you guys to reconsider. Now, we understand budget cuts. As a board ourselves, we have to do budget cuts for the two, but to completely cut the amount off is a huge, huge thing. So, you know, we're willing to work with you guys and see what we can come up together.
Okay. Thank you, Sparkle.
Yep.
Appreciate it. Appreciate the input. Yeah, Daniel.
Where, where are we at on that item?
After the hearing, when you start talking about the budget, here's kind of a summary of, of what I received back from the commission of possible cuts to, I only put on here the items that you, that all of you made changes to. There are notes of other ones, but for that, that item, I guess I'll go over here, the cultural commission. It does show, that's what this line item is. It shows that four of you had it at zero, and then Commissioner Hurst moved it to, moved 1,000 off of it to 3,000. That's where that one's at. The request is $4,000.
Is the cultural commission the same thing as?
That's what it's been called from the past. There was, I think, a resolution, when it was with the Hutch Rec, it was part of the cultural commission. So that's, we've never changed the line item, but it's Farmers Market. I think once the rec pushed it over to Farmers Market in '24.
Okay, well, I mean, I appreciate you guys taking the time to come out here. I mean, this is admittedly in our budget, a very, very small item, but at the same time, I know it's really important to you. So the, I, I think the one thing that we've been doing that I think generally we have consensus on is pulling back a little bit on areas that we think the nonprofit sector could better support. I think the one thing we've done poorly is, like, do it so abruptly that there's no opportunity for the, the other agencies to infill, or we're pulling out. And so I wouldn't mind, you know, adopting Commissioner Hurst's proposal, or just leaving it at 4,000, it's an immaterial amount for our budget, and setting a, setting a goal for an engagement, like, community foundation, like, I think these are areas that they would, would easily support. I think there are probably donors that would, would infill this, like, give them time to infill, so they don't have a, a budget hole. So like, I, I'm supportive of maintaining it with, with the goal of finding, probably a wrong word, more appropriate source of funding over the long run.
Okay. John, you pushed your button.
Yeah, so if I may, so last year during the budget hearing, that's exactly what we did. We said, hey, next year, we're going to cut a lot of these outside agencies' funds pretty drastically, if not altogether, and so you guys need to prepare. But then when we had the budget hearing, there was more of a push, I mean, the, the budget workshop, there was more of a push to hold the line. But a year ago, when we did this, we told the outside agencies that we are planning drastic cuts to it this year. So, so the announcement was made a year ago.
Mr. Hurst?
Yeah, you know, as most of you know, I have participated in the farmers market in past years, three or four years. I'm not this year. Decided to cut back. But I did, at the Gonzas Governor's Conference last week, last Wednesday, I did have occasion to talk with the owner-operator of Juniper Hill Farms in Horns, Scott Tillman. And I asked him to... And I asked him to, I knew this was going to come up, so I asked him directly what they were doing at Lawrence. And he says they, of course, their, their farmers market is twice the size of ours in two different buildings. But in, in each case, they have a musician that comes in and plays. And they have two of them that come in and play, one in each building. And he thought it did add a lot to the farmers market. And, and I truly believe that and I cut this $1,000 based upon the fact that there is 25, approximately 25, it depends upon the year, of Saturdays that the farmers market is open. And a lot of our discussion had to do with making it an event that people want to come to and participate. And I know there's lots of money that goes through and out to the producers with, with their dues and, and, and their rent of their, of the slot that they are available to sell out of. We pay that lot every time you go into the market as a producer. And that helps, helps provide for the electricity and things that are involved with the farmers market. But to make it an event, to make it, we talk about making these things a destination point that's very, very useful to a community and, and there being a community like. And I know just by being there that, yeah, not everybody enjoys the music, but there's a whole lot of people that do. They'll sit out there and relax and you may be there at a time if you visit that people aren't sitting up there front listening. But there are times, many times, when you are up there. And it just adds to the whole event. And, and I, I cut it because we had to look at some cuts somewhere. And in conversation with farmers market, that they, that they felt that they could handle this with regard to the musicians and having 25 Saturdays to have people there to make it an event and a destination. And it, to me, it adds a lot to it, and especially after I talked with Scott at Juniper Hills. That goes to the Lawrence Market.
Mr. Bogner?
Yeah. I'm sure your budget is a lot more than the $4,000 we're giving. What percentage is this 4,000 is your? What percentage is the 4,000 of your total budget?
So that, the entire 4,000 goes to all the musicians. So that, when we sent our proposal, I think in May, when we sat, when we sat down with you guys and did our fiscal year. So that 4,000, Kelly is our media manager and she pays, like our individual musicians are 150 and then bands are 350. So she has it worked out from May until the end of October to that entire 4,000 gets paid out to every musician, if that makes sense. So there's not one single cent that doesn't go to a musician.
What's your, what's your total budget?
For the musicians?
No, for your business.
For the, the total?
I think that's what they're asking you.
For, for this year's budget for music was for, for 4,000 for this year.
We know what it is for, for, for the music.
That's the, that's for the SNAP program. Okay, hold on. Okay. Let me find it. I want to say it's like 15,000 for 15,000?
And that includes the four or not?
No, that does not include.
So we're talking about 19,000?
Right.
One fifth of your total budget.
Correct.
Slightly less than one fifth. Just trying to get a handle on, you're, you're getting your other monies where? From other government entities, booth space?
Booth space and membership.
And membership.
Yep. The only other grant that we have is through the, the pathways and that's strictly for the SNAP program, for double up food bucks, for food stamps. And that, that has to go strictly for the advertisement for food stamp program and involving new, getting new produce vendors and that are able to provide food for the food stamp recipients of Reno County.
I was just wondering if we meet somewhere in the middle here. As John is saying, you were forewarned. Mr. Hurst is meeting somewhere in the middle. If we were to go forward with that kind of concept, you're, you're receiving these other funds through. I'm just wondering whether you could charge more for the actual users, the, the table space, for lack of a better, or, or, you know, how hard would it be for you to, to, to pretty much immediately replace what we were, were contemplating taking away? Because that's at your discretion and your board's discretion as to how you will spend your funds. And if it's, the music is that important to you, then out of your overall budget, you should be able to come up with something or, or you know, at least work out a deal. And I take it that you're willing to work out a deal.
Sure.
I mean, you've said it in direct correspondence to us in here today, so I'd be willing to give it some thought. As Commissioner Friesen has stated and our Commissioner Hurst just put it in his budget thoughts.
Well, we do owe the county work on another $50 million worth of budget items. So I, just to get this moving along, I would make a motion to allocate $3,000 as recommended by Commissioner Hurst. I appreciate Commissioner Weitzel. I do remember that now and I do remember this conversation last year. This is now kind of coming back to me. So my, my motion would also be conditioned on this group next year, if you come back and it's zero, having some feedback as to what you've done to engage the community foundation and other nonprofits.
I will second that motion.
Okay. I think there's a procedural issue that they're talking about. We're in a public session, so I'll just, I'll put that aside and we'll get through the, the, that and then bring it up, so.
I know you did give us this spring, some information on total dollars that were generated at the farmers market.
Correct. And if it was discussed last year, the, the budget was being removed from us because this was turned over to us at the end of last year. So it's kind of, it was all just being a miscommunication, I'm sure, with that. So when I saw that the budget was being removed, I just recently was notified through news outlets.
So just out of curiosity, how does your rent per stall and your dues compare to, like Sedgwick County? I've been to both.
Oh, my goodness.
Both markets.
We, it's eight, eight, no, you're fine. We're very, very reasonable. So.
That's why I wonder. I don't think quite, when I heard the rates, I don't think you're quite charging enough anyway, honestly.
And, and that's, that's true. And that's something that we'll be bringing up in our annual meeting in January. But yeah, our, our inside stalls are $8 and outside are 15. Memberships are 40, but they were 25 for years. So we've, we're making those changes and we do appreciate your guys' time. And like I said, we're willing to work with you and we understand the budget cuts and.
And I don't mind putting this, you know, we moved to that point, putting this, some money back in the budget for this, but you know, we operate 11 garden centers around the state where I work and we run, we run live music all, I mean, stream music all the time in those and, and certainly music stimulates shopping. I understand that. Certain kinds don't.
Sure.
And so that, is that a possibility to put a sound system in where you may not have the money to run? I mean, I guess.
That's a possibility, but we'd have to, we'd have to definitely bring that up in our annual meeting and have that up for discussion, but.
I mean, the lives nice, but I've, I've been to the garden center several times, you know, they're playing and I don't see a lot of audience around them, but I, I'm not unsupportive of it. I just, I just wondered if that's a possibility in the future.
Sure.
And I'll move along on that.
The biggest thing, I think with us is the biggest thing is the musicians feel like we're providing another outlet or another job for them too as well, so.
Okay. Any other comments? Thank you, Sparkle.
You're welcome. Thank you for your guys' time.
And all I ask, is there anybody else here? I doubt, from what I see in the crowd, there is. With that, we can close it, I guess.
I was, I was going to ask for kind of an explanation of the procedure for the board, yeah.
The, the, the budget hearing concept is kind of that you open a hearing, ask for mostly public comment, close the budget hearing, and then you go into the actual discussion of the rest of what you want to do with the budget.
Right.
So that's how, that's just a unique thing about budget hearings.
The motion, close it or just close it?
Just close it.
Yep.
Just close the chair.
The little hereby closed the meeting and move to 8B, Resolution 24, 2024-22 for the Reno County 25 budget to levy proper tax, pro, my mouse dry, levy property tax rate exceeding the revenue neutral rate.
To clarify, this has to be done if, unless you guys are going to pass a budget that is at the R and R revenue neutral rate or below. This resolution does not state the level of above R and R, but this is required on the same day that you have the public hearing. That is why it's the second item on the agenda.
Yeah, so I would move to, move this to 8C and discuss and adopt the budget first. So that way, if we do stay at the revenue neutral rate, then we, then this is a moot point.
We can do that.
That would be fine, as long, but if you do table the budget, then we'll just bring it back up.
Right, yeah, the 8C.
So we'll move to 8C. We'll come back to this one on 8B then, on this resolution to discussion and adoption of Reno County budget. So you, we'll pull that up again and we'll talk about, well, if there's any numbers that people want to talk about.
The summary here and just as the discussion, here's kind of where there were some changes. The, the one for the farmers market is part of this outside agencies appropriation. So it doesn't show individually. So I go over here to show that one individually, but the discussion items are what I received back from the commissioners, either email or on phone calls. And then the ones that are not on here, as you can see, Commissioner Weitzel had mentioned aging and transit and public health. The public health was to remove all vaccinations. That is grant funded, so it would remove it from the revenues and the expenditures. It doesn't impact the property tax, but it would change the budget. I didn't put the exact numbers, but I think it's like $25,000.
And that was just, just for the county since they can get the vaccinations other places?
Yeah, yeah, sorry. Clarification. And then the aging and transit, we never got a chance to sit down to talk about what all that would entail, any competition. But the rest of the numbers are shown here in yellow of differences as, like the county fair.
Relatively close.
So I kind of put this up so you guys could have a discussion of where on these items you want to go. I will also comment anything that's, so column F, the flat mill levy, that is what we have in the but state budget form right now. Any changes that you make is going to take, I will then send this up to Shonda. She's probably watching the meeting. She'll enter.
She's watching. She's watching you right now.
She's watching.
She lies on you, did you?
Live, but it'll take her some time to get this correct, to make any changes. So we would need to get plenty of time before we come back and adopt a budget.
My concern, Shonda Arvin, administrative budget specialist, my concern is that the state has mandated that the resolution has to be adopted first before the budget. So that's why I came in is it has to be done in that step. So I wanted to make sure that you guys were aware of that.
And she's gone through the training the state of Kansas puts on, so.
So we really need to back up, pass that resolution?
I would feel more comfortable with what the state has mandated.
I mean, if we want to work backwards from there, we can, but.
Nothing is compromised, yes.
Okay.
I'll then, I'll make the motion to pass the resolution number. What number are we giving it?
24, 2024-22.
I mean, the state's pretty much told us 20, 24, 22 that we need to pass this before we can go on and do anything else. So I'll make that motion as recommended by staff.
For a second, I've seen you a minute ago, Daniel. We'll get back to you. I'll second. Seconded by Commissioner Hurst. Further comment?
Are you in agreement?
I'm, I haven't said it, to be honest. I was just sitting here thinking whether or not I was going to comment that the mechanics of how the revenue neutral rate works are very cumbersome and I don't like them. So I think to avoid a really bad audit report or even worse, an illegal budget, we do, it's very wise to go ahead and do this stuff.
Okay. That's a maximum anyway.
It's the maximum, which you don't, yeah. I mean, it's just, you don't want to have, you don't want to open that can of worms. I would rather, none of us should.
And a no vote would mean that we would have to do the revenue neutral rate?
Yeah, if that's your position, yeah.
To exceed the revenue neutral rate is what we're built voting on, correct?
Right, yeah. So if we vote yes, then we.
We got a motion, we got a second. Any, any questions, further questions? Not roll call.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Friesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Weitzel?
No.
Commissioner Bogner?
He is.
Two steps forward and one step back.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
May I make a suggestion? And if this isn't the board, I hope the board wants to do it, that's fine, but my thought was that, you know, if we just go through the, through the budget and look at the changes people proposed and then kind of just talk about each individually and then I think that might be a good way to proceed. But, you know, obviously you're the chair, so you make the decision.
Well, I mean, one thing's for sure, we're, we just voted on something that's probably going to stand the way it is by looking at the majority here. We're going to exceed revenue neutral. And so I don't mind doing that if there's so many major changes that y'all feel like that you want to move from this point, but they're pretty balanced between several people here. The majority, I think. And so I think one of the first issues is again, was you going to address that, Daniel, on the?
Well, I, I was just going to dispose of the farmers market items, but if we want to go through it in order, it's fine.
I mean, you, you came up, did you come up with a line that was a consensus from all those?
So everything, yeah, what's right here kind of is a summarized changes that all of you had commented on.
Were you in one line?
No.
This looks like everybody's together.
No, because until you had this discussion, I think Commissioner White, Weitzel's comment is a good one, you know, go through each one.
That's fine.
Category. If you want to start with farmers market, that's fine. Also, I, I would probably recommend starting with the partner agencies. And then we'll go back to the discussion because there's two in the partner agencies on the outside appropriations. It's the 4H, the county fair, and then farmers market are these two numbers that you guys had a little bit of differences on the changes.
Yeah, and I'll say to you that if you guys meet me in the middle and do half of the cuts that I recommended, then we'll still meet the revenue neutral rate. Yeah, and I'll say to you that if you guys meet me in the middle and um do half of the cuts that I recommended, then it'll still be the, meet the revenue neutral rate.
What is uh? The target there?
Nine hundred some thousand, and I proposed over two million in cuts, so.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna get rid of one of them right now, I, I, on your uh discretionary hiring. Uh, I only took one discretionary hiring off, everybody else took two, and I'm agreeable with that. So that would take sixty thousand off of mine, I agree with it.
I only had one out, I think. If I remember correctly.
Which one, which line is that?
Where it says one thirty, so other expenses and reimbursements, there's ten thousand, that's always, that was already budgeted.
Just give me that Excel row number we're talking about.
Twenty six.
Okay.
Yeah, so I said no new employees.
And these are the three discretionary positions, because when we do the budget in April, departments make a request in April for a budget. That's the next calendar year, that then lasts for that full calendar year, if something comes up and they need a new position, they have to wait over a year and a half. This puts in completely in the control of the county commission, a couple positions that are not filled until a department comes and makes a request to the commissioners. And then you guys make a decision, yes or no, otherwise it just stays in the bu- budget and helps with the cash balance. So we just, not knowing what those positions would be, put it at sixty thousand a position, that's where, as it shows one ninety, but to take the ten thousand off, so it's a hundred and eighty thousand. That was budgeted for. Those three positions and Commissioner Hurst did not remove any, and then Commissioner Parks and Commissioner Bogner removed one position. And Commissioner Russell removed them all, and then Commissioner Friesen, I went on the discussion, I think.
I thought I was the two.
Oh, I, Commissioner, I took it as you left two in there, because originally I talked about four.
Yeah.
But then, okay, to the flat mill levy, we took one off, so it'd be three.
Okay. But I think there's a realistic need coming up that we're going to do that, I mean, we could do that and amend that, I guess, but later out of something, right? If we took it out.
If you, if you took the one, if, if there's still two in there, so it leaves it at one thirty, then that's still is better than what we have today. It's more, I mean, because we don't have that in place right now, but I think for the future, we do need it.
Well, I. So Randy took care of me here, we had a bit, a family emergency over the weekend and I did not do my homework. We had a conversation and he drew in here and I told him I wasn't gonna mess with it too much, but like I do, I, I would say, like. Every time we've cut personnel, like you do what you're supposed to do, you defend, you know, your staff's repen- re- recommendations and. You try to hold the line, we cut it, and I, we never hear a thing ever again, like, nobody ever says like, man, we would not have enough staff. So I'm just challenging. You know, um. And I'm taking the blame for not giving you a heads up here, that's my fault, but. It just seems like when we push a little bit on this, you always find a way and it seems all right, I mean, have. Like in hindsight, our cuts over the last three years. Like, has it made the county sharper, like, have we had any issues where, where you're like, man, we cut too deep? We're not providing good services.
Well, I think the budgets for all departments are very thin.
Yeah.
The contractual commodities, there's really no room to make cuts without cutting, I don't know what you cut. Personnel. They're kind of been up and down, some departments won't make cuts, that's what I think the department directors do a great job of. When they need new positions, they ask, when they need, if they don't need them, they reduce. This is more of a precaution, they're basically a, a cushion, because sometimes I think when departments may cut a position or don't ask in time. They realize they really need it, now, I think government employees and county employees here at Reno County are great, they make do with what they have. But that doesn't mean they don't need more, but we're gonna only be able to provide the services we can provide with the number of employees. Doesn't mean we can't do more if we have more employees.
Well, I'm always for less employees, but is, is a general thought of this that you see a need coming up? Other than just filling a job and they have to wait to another budget session.
The treasurer's department is one that I could see coming up. The tag office is paid for out of motor vehicle fees. Reno County at the current time covers a hundred percent of that cost for the employees on the tag line with that motor vehicle fee, so it's not property taxes. There's going to be a point in the coming future, and I don't know how far out, I would say in a couple of years, if not sooner. That we're gonna have to use general fund money to help pay for some of the costs of the tag line, because we don't charge enough. Or we don't bring enough in for the number of employees, as Rochelle probably need at least one more, if not two more people. You probably have all heard about the hour, hours on hours of wait over in the tag line. One thing we could do is get more employees, but that motor vehicle fund is only gonna cover a certain, I mean, we can't expand that, so. I say that because Rochelle didn't ask for a new employee at during the budget, but I know she's emailed me and I've had other people that don't work here, you know. Citizens say, why are you not putting more people over there? Well, part of it's money, this would be one, if we needed general fund money, it could use part of. That, that's kind of an example, so that's one I do see coming up. Depending on what the county commission and planning commission does with zoning, planning, separate from countywide, I know that's not going there, but. If we needed to do any kind of code enforcement, if we needed to expand any of the services, I know Marcus stretched really thin right now. If planning needed another person, they don't have it in their budget. This would be another example where that could come in, those are just examples.
Options if we took this clear out and they come up with a need mid-year.
Well, you have to use cash carryover, if there's cash carryover and you wanted to use that, then that's what you would use. There's still money in the general fund to figure it out.
You always got a cash, Randy, you've never had a problem.
Not as much going forward.
Well, and I, and I will say too, that I also didn't reduce the five percent raise, because I think our people are worth their, their money and with inflation being at three point three percent. Um, a four percent raise really doesn't give them a raise, and so I did leave that at five percent and figured this was a better place to go.
This matter first, before we move to performance rate.
I just thought they were related, so that's why I brought that up.
I'm all right with having two.
What's the consensus here? Two, Dan?
All right. Let's move to different one.
Well, you got three of them on two.
Is like, yeah, there's, that's my problem area right there.
Well, and if we, if we put, if we put two employees here, we're gonna get two new, two, two new employees, if we put zero, then there's gonna have to be decisions made, if they want a new employee. So.
Right.
Oh, I know, I know, but that's, that's the way, that's the way psychology works, if the money's there, then you find a way to spend it.
I. Wait a minute, I wanted to just bring up a couple higher level thoughts, um. Man, I really feel like we're gonna. Need more in our economic development fund going forward, and I know. That's controversial, but. I, I guess one thing I'd say is if I, if I cut. Sixty five thousand out of. The employee discretionary fund, I'd rather put it in economic development. But. I'm just throwing out a couple of thoughts there.
Get some comments on it?
Well.
I see the wheels turning.
Well, I'm just wondering if maybe you guys want to take care of some of the easier.
Yeah.
To get rid of those, I mean, because you're gonna barter back and forth.
I'd like to just come down from the top where our way down.
Sorry, I, I messed, I messed everybody up by spouting off about one I knew I could.
Yeah, take, Randy, why don't you take a few off the list that everybody's in agreement with?
The uh, the county fair. It was, what was it? Requested twenty? Well, we done, I see you had twenty thousand was last year, twenty thousand requested again, a couple of them, twenty-three of them, I had eighteen, I just did a five percent. Cut straight through, I think was what, ten percent straight through was what I did on all those, so that's kind of where I came up with that. But I see a consensus of twenty thousand dollars to just go ahead and continue to fund that, is that.
Yeah, and, and like I said, to be fair, we did warn them last year that we would be cutting them drastically, so.
What's?
The way I look at the county fair is it, it is a uh youth project primarily, and if we need to take care of our youth.
I would see that as being a consensus, are you agreement with that, all of you on the twenty thousand, so we can move off of that one, let's go down to the next one, tech funds. As we had uh several thoughts on that, just stay at four hundred thousand, three of them, and. Again, I just threw them cuts out because I, I thought, you know, we needed to talk about whether they need some reductions and they. And based on the conversation two of you brought up, I didn't bring up, they were, they were told they could lose a little bit more this year. Um, because everybody's taking a hit, but then we're seeing that pretty much, it can, you know.
My, my thought kind of on the deal was is, we've got several groups here that. Tried to stay. Where they were last year, or, or agreed to stay where they were last year, and the inflation has gone on.
Right.
So uh. They took what we said last year to heart and tried to remain at least neutral. With inflation, they've lost ground, uh however, we'll see further down, I had a different opinion. But on those agencies, and, and it depended on the agencies for me, some of these I feel are doing great service to the community and. They got beat up pretty hard last year, and if they're cooperating and staying the same or trying to cut back a little, I, I, I gave them a pass. Whether that's correct or not, that was kind of my thinking.
I don't think a lot of people realize that the, that uh many of the tech residents actually are getting paid to. And it goes back into the tech fund for their work that they accomplish for certain companies, I know, I know one company that hires there and.
Right.
Well, we didn't do a great job communicating or cut last year, and they. They took it like a champ, so I'd not really want to hit them again, I mean, they took the hardest hit from a. Non, uh, outside agency perspective and.
Yep. Who led that charge?
The, who led it? It was, it was, I, I'll, I'll take the blame.
I'm gonna throw it back on the guy that led that charge.
I'll take the blame for uh not communicating it well.
Yeah, that's all right.
Yeah, and I'll say too, just to defend myself, you know, I'm not saying these aren't great groups and that they're not, you know, um, doing really good work in the county, I'm just saying that. You know, people shouldn't be higher property taxes to fund them when they can fund themselves.
Well, and I've heard from three people, that's enough of a consensus to move off that and leave it to four hundred, as far as I'm concerned, because, you know, it's, it'd be a moot point to discuss it any further. And mental health, let's see, John at two thou- two hundred thousand, me at three sixty, and then three of them at four hundred. Do we want to meet a concession there in the middle and take some, or just leave it at the four hundred?
Is this Horizons?
This is Horizons.
Was it a, um, state mandated?
Yeah, I mean, it's one of those. At some level, it's very vague as to what the level, but it's, it's a statute that says we are to fund it. But there's not a minimum or a specific amount you have to do.
Like if we pulled the two hundred thousand, where would the money come from for the difference for them? Where do they get their other money?
Fees, probably fees that they charge for.
They also partner with school districts and other things as well, because I know like when I was on Haven School Board, they got a lot of money from the Haven School Board as well.
We just heard how many services they offered this last year.
Well, yeah, and there's, and there's services. Their services scale with the money though, I mean, it's, in my opinion, it's one of those deals where, you know, the more money you get, the more services you provide.
Well, if it's needed, sometimes you have to provide those.
I, I'd feel better if we would have given them a target and asked them what would happen if they, you know, maybe next year. You know. Ron's not here anymore, but one of these two guys are, are gonna be here and not me and Commissioner White, so um. But maybe next year, those that are gonna be here. You know, part of our analysis on, on what we give to outside agencies, we should pose the question, if, if. We reduced your budget, what would you do to kind of determine? Better inform ourselves, it's kind of hard.
I agree with that.
After hearing what just got presented. And it's been kind of a goal of several of people here that if they can keep people out of jail, we've got to fund that. And it won't, you look at some of the checks that are written on a weekly basis.
For the jail, yeah.
For food and for medical, I mean. They're your ward when they're in there and you owe forever expense that happens, and if they keep. What, what was the level, if I remember right, I can look it up, but if they keep thirty some people out of there. And we're not feeding them and taking them down to the hospital and every damn thing else. Make up a lot of this.
Well, that, I think that's a good point, it's, it's not in here, and it's probably one of our bigger, like ev- we all talk about it. We can never figure out what to do about it, and it's so sensitive because it's easily. It's easily manipulated into like uh the not funding law enforcement, which is, nobody's even close to that, but. Is there a way to incentivize, like, I think, you know, we look at it as more of like. A penalty when we reduce somebody's budget. But is there a way to incentivize? The courts, the DA, law enforcement. To reduce um. Intake into the jail. To reduce our expenses in a safe, in a way safe for the community, like, how do we do that? To like, because I think I heard, you know, sometimes we get to capacity and then we start. You know, we, we may have to outsource to other counties or vice versa, and. The, they're, you know, making a twenty percent change in how we. Um, incarcerate could make a huge impact to the county budget and. I, I, it's such a sensitive topic, the DA's, if he's listening, is the most sensitive on this issue, and I, he's charged with enforcing the law. But he also has great discretion in what he does, so does law enforcement, they have discretion on who they arrest and who they don't. And there's, we haven't tied in a positive way. Like, some sort of positive reinforcement to making good judgment, judgment decisions in law enforcement. And don't twist my words. I'm, you're not, I, I hear people that aren't here twisting my words, but I'm. We have a goal here to reduce tax impact to the county and, and. All of that flows into the jail, these, these really high costs, and there's gotta be a better way, there's gotta be a better way. To, to incentivize.
Well, I'd assure.
Our decisions.
Go ahead.
Daniel? Mr. Stanton?
Mr. Stanton has implemented a deal, and along with law enforcement. We haven't had a chance to see the results of that. He did convey to me that, that he gave me the exact numbers a couple months ago, the number of people that have gone into these programs to keep them out of jail. Unfortunately, some of them don't know when they got a good deal. And, and, and they'll end up back in there. But it has been somewhat successful. And, you know, whatever they've eliminated in the first month or two since it's, the whole thing's been set up, we're talking about a month or two versus looking at a full year's, uh, results. So you said incentivize them? We did. He went and created the program along with the law enforcement. Right now, we, it hasn't been in effect long enough to s- see the true effect of it. These guys have been, been working on it, Daniel, and I think we got to get a little further into it to see how much impact it has. We know these are high-cost items, and, and they are aware of the goal, and they've done a lot of things at this point. It's just we're not far enough into it to actually know the savings.
As much as I agree with all those thoughts, we're a little bit off track here. We were talking about budgetary dollars. And it impacts the future, I get that, of what we do with that, whether it'll help that budget.
I mean, we can reach behind the spreadsheet here and go into other budget line items if we want to, um, but maybe nobody wants to.
We could analyze every penny this spend. I don't know that, that behooves us to do that if we trust our staff in some areas.
I, my, my comment would be, I mean, mental health is kind of like tech. It's one that both of those are required from the county at some level. It doesn't say the level of funding, but both of them do help members of the, a select group of the community. Um, but mental health, Horizons, I know they've helped the county out a lot in the past few weeks.
Right.
But they're always there, and they might be able to, and they help the jail, and a lot of times crime does have something to do with mental health, so.
Well, and you, you equate that to them helping just in those tr- those situations. But we had a tragedy where they were on guard to help do some counseling with that, too, and I appreciate him coming out to do that, so. But I mean, I'm just saying, I see three of you guys, if you're still on your feelings of the four hundred thousand, that's kind of a consensus to go that direction.
Can I say something first, though?
Yes.
Um, so, uh, you know, if you look at the history of the population of the jail, one ninety, one ninety, one ninety, um, you know, we put money into mental health, it stays at one ninety, it stays at one ninety. Um, COVID comes, drops to ninety-two, I believe. Um, there were not massive crime sprees, um, during COVID, so it seems like no matter what we do, the population of the jail stays at about one ninety. Um, so is that because that's where we're at capacity? And when we get to one ninety, you know, maybe they don't arrest as many people, or, like, I mean, the sheriff would be better to answer, to answer that to me, but, you know, it seems to me we aren't actually keeping out of jail, people out of jail by putting money here. Not the total number. Maybe it's different people going, but.
Here's one thing that, that you touched on, and said, there, John, is that that you, not too many years ago, the average stay was seventy days. The average stay today, the last number I heard was a hundred and forty. And so that goes back to exactly what Commissioner Friesen was saying. Needs to be some time of coordination. And, uh, not only between our attorneys and our judges, but also those attorneys that represent the people in there. And, uh, twenty-five, about twenty-five percent of our total full-time, uh, equivalent of employees is regarding safety, which includes the jail and the, uh, sheriff's office.
Well, I, I don't know how you've figured this out, because at some point, I'm just gonna point to those elected officials and say, like, this tax issue is part of your responsibility, too. Like, yeah, we approve it. But when it's any conversation of cutting, the rebuttal is like, I have the authority to set my own budget. Then, then it's your, then you, you're responsible for the taxes that your department has levy, and take responsibility for that. If, if you're not in agreement that we should reduce some of these expenses. It's just, it kind of like, nobody wants to take responsibility for the ecosphere of law enforcement expenses we have, which is a huge part of our, um, budget. I would like the commission to be able to, you know, have a stronger, um, impact in it. But it seems to always, as soon as we bring that up, it seems like that's not your lane. And every, but we're the ones that get yelled at when taxes are too high. So I, it's, this is a, like, a problem since the start of County Commission, I'm sure, and it just, um, maybe then the next group of elected officials could do a better job than, than I can at, at solving it, but at least we're flagging it. I don't know what, what else we can do.
Well, I, I don't think every one hundred percent of this is going towards jail help, but it's certainly a part of it, that we fund those in the community. And I don't disagree with anything that was said, and, and for me personally, as far as the recidivism that comes back to the jail, but I'm talking to Sheriff Campbell the other day on, on another matter. It's, you know, you, you got individuals in a community that are just in, out, in, out, in, out, continually frustrating them. And they would just soon see them out of there if they could stay out of it, judge throws them right back in there, and then they go out and do something crazy again, and they're right back in there. So it just, it's a rotating door. I don't, I don't know where that ends. What the answer is, I agree with you. Something has to happen.
I was glad to see some actual data today from, uh, mental health situation from Horizons, and I think that we heard today that there's gonna be more data, and I think that will help a lot towards helping decisions. Finally got, somebody asked for that, that data, and it got presented, and, and I thought that was something we can.
Well, you can't, you can't work toward anything without it. I went to the, I'll probably get flack for this, the unhoused, I went to a meeting or two of those, and you, you, you sat there and they had no facts or figures on, on the true numbers and where they are and what's going on with it, and the ones that are in jail. They finally started pulling it together. You can't actively find a way of, of resolution or some, some program or something to help that without knowing what the target is, and, and whether they're residents, non-residents, and whether we can deport them back to their communities, and that kind of stuff to, to alleviate some of the problem, because we should share in it. They shouldn't all come to Reno County, that's for sure.
But, and you asked what it ends. It ends when they don't have the money to fund a hundred and ninety people anymore. I mean, that's when they, as long as their budget lets them have a hundred and ninety people in the county jail, that's how many people we're gonna have in the county jail. I mean, history has shown that. Maybe, maybe they can work to, uh, to stop that, but history has showed, you know, they're gonna use, they're gonna, they're gonna, there's gonna be as many people in there as we have the money for, unless there's another health emergency and they let them out for that.
John, I don't want them out here beside me and my family. If they're, if they need to be incarcerated, they need to be incarcerated.
Right, but like I said, but, you know, we had ninety-two during COVID, and we didn't have widespread crime. I mean, there wasn't a spike in crime during COVID. That, that's half the population.
Businesses weren't open.
I, I really want to redirect this back. We're talking about mental health fund, and I realize that does part of the jail, but we, we can't solve the jail budget through this line item, so we need to talk about what we want to do with this one, whether we want to leave it, change it. I know, John, you got two hundred thousand, and I had three sixty, and then there's three four hundred, so, um, I need some kind of a direction here, if you're.
And Commissioner Friesen made a good point, is we need to ask him, and so I'd be in favor of keeping it four hundred now.
Okay. I'll, I'll stick with my. You will? You're the other line item, it's like, you okay with that, or, you know, for this year? I mean, she is willing to do some things, and even the questions I ask her, which is kind of a hard, hard question, because it seems like there's a lot of contradictions and, and spiritual issues, and she was willing to look into partnering agencies with that. That, that'll go as far as this four hundred thousand will in a hurry, if people, uh, can, can change in that manner. I, I just know it will. So, well, we'll leave that one there. Let's move to the museum. Uh, their budget was, uh, a hundred eighty-five. There was a, they asked for the same amount again, wasn't it? No, two thirty-two?
Two thirty.
Two thirty-two they'd asked for. There's several different ones in there from one sixty-fives to one sixty, one sixty-six, and then fifty, Mr. White, so.
Yeah, fifty was enough for one full-time employee.
And, you know, I would have looked at more, personally deeper cuts on that, because my opinion is I go by there and never see a car in there, and I think they could probably operate. This is my opinion, I don't run that, but they could probably operate on a more part-time basis and, and, and open for events, because they, they don't have twenty-three cars sitting around there all day long with people coming through. Maybe one of the schools are, they need some extra help, but I seen a host of volunteers sitting in here the day that they wanted to discuss budget, and there was more than that that helps the museum, and I think they have the help they need without a huge budget, quite honestly.
What are you, what are you thinking?
What am I thinking? I think we ought to go somewhere between the one sixty and, uh, maybe a little closer to the fifty.
Like a hundred?
I, I would be okay with that, because I just, it's, it's one of those things that, that they promised that they would get the membership up and the other things, and it really didn't change since last year. And what they did was change personnel, and I know that happens, but I, 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 as far as what I seen, I didn't see the growth increase that they thought maybe they could have, and so.
Well, my, my thought was is the rest of these agencies tried to pretty much hold, hold their ass the same as they were. This is one agency that increased to a point where he was getting everything back he gave up last year, plus, plus some more. And that's where I arrived at my one sixty, uh, not gonna re, you know, he apparently didn't take us seriously like some of the others did, at least listened to the point where they were trying to remain the same. He went clear the other direction, and, and for me, it indicates that they have no intention of working toward what our goal is. So I kind of figured, well, no, you're not gonna get that. Yeah, I mean, depending on what you guys think. And, and I'm willing to fluctuate a little bit either way, probably, depending on what you guys think.
Yeah, we've got feeling on that, sir.
I mean, I, 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 I haven't been terribly impressed, um, the, the, the three times they've come and talked to us, and, you know, to Commissioner Bogner's point, like, you're not, you're not understanding the homework assignment. Um, I mean, I, I think it's important to preserve history.
Yes.
But, um, this does seem like another area where we could start guiding this to more of a, a community-funded effort, work on an endowment, whatever. And until we incentivize that, I don't think anything's gonna change, so a more material reduction.
We are bound at some level on this, I know, but.
Yeah, I think there was a vote for up to a certain mill levy. I don't know what that is, but the people voted for that.
Can we just drop it to that?
What?
Yeah, it was, it was, it was an up to.
Up to, yeah, so it's not a minimum, but.
So it was back in the nineties that people voted for this, but I mean, that was a different time. That was before cell phones and.
The internet.
Yeah.
I, I would recommend being careful about too drastic a cut.
Yeah.
Today, there's no one here for them. If they come, if they, if you cut them too much and they show back up at the next meeting, the budgets are set, so just reminder, as you guys realized that last year with conservation.
Most of it's personnel, and I'm sure they're using some of it for the overhead for the building, that kind of stuff as well, but I mean.
Yes, I have fifty thousand as one full-time employee. I'm willing to meet in the middle and do a hundred thousand with Randy.
You have any feelings on that? He, he's thinking a hundred. If that's, if that's too sharp a cut, we could come up.
I think that's too sharp a cut at one time. I think it gets a point across.
One twenty-five?
You don't want to take everything away from history.
Well, no, they're looking at hiring another full-time at the one eighty-five. They're looking at going up to, from three to four full-time. Because they've got other money coming in, other than just this.
I, I'd be okay with one twenty-five.
One twenty-five, that's kind of where I'm leaning. That would be a little, a little less sharp to cut them, but yeah. I mean, they keep increasing and increasing personnel, and they just, and the program.
Again, it's, it's not a, a bad program, and we, I mean, I think everybody agrees that we want to, um, maintain our history, but it's like, I think we are making progress in shifting where the money's coming from, and it's just, it naturally finds its way. Like, if we pull it, something else will fill it, and if we do it gently like this, I don't think it's.
Where are you at that?
Where were you at?
It's a forty thousand. Forty thousand dollar reduction from, well.
So I was at fifty, and then Randy had mentioned a hundred, so I said I'd be wanting to do a hundred.
Well, it's your thoughts, Ron. We had enough appetite for that.
I think that's, I think that's too sharp a cut. I'd like, I'd like to see some procedure done, uh, get the point across. But I think that's an, that's an awful sharp cut from a hundred, even from a hundred and eighty-five.
Are you thinking maybe one forty, one fifty?
One fifty, I could.
I could live with that.
About one forty.
Danny, you're the deciding votes. Really, whatever you say goes, as long as it's in the middle.
Well, where are you at? You're at one twenty-five?
I said one twenty-five, but I'd come up and meet that, so we could get something done here.
I mean, I, I'd, I'd do one twenty-five, actually, but if it's, I'm listening to.
About one forty-five.
This is so.
Phil gave me one.
We do, we do auctioneer in here.
So I think one twenty-five from three of us.
I want to respect these guys, too. Uh, how about, they're at one forty-five, we're at one twenty-five, you can.
One forty.
One forty, all right. Let's do one forty.
Anybody on one forty?
Obviously, there's.
Forty-five, forty thousand. How much percent cut is that?
Somebody?
One eighty-five to one forty.
Uh, three, ten, something like that.
Twenty-five percent.
Twenty.
Thirty percent is fifty-five about.
I mean, you come back and things are bustling, any money, we can always rediscuss this next year, but.
Okay. One, what, one thirty-five, is that what we decided? Okay.
Let's go, let's go one forty. One forty, one forty?
I don't care.
Well, that's three of us. One forty, set it.
Yes.
Let's go to.
We talked about them needing to modernize and, and go out and get members and things like that, so.
County Commission, now, I assume that was in there for wages? And we talked a wage increase that had came up here a while back. I think all, pretty much all of us took that out of there, but, but Mr., uh, Mr. White, did you still leave that in there with that intent?
Yeah, yeah, I intended to leave it at a hundred thousand, just because, um, I mean, basically, this, this pays for the insurance if, uh, somebody's got a family and wants to do this, and they've got to miss a lot of work to do this if they've got a family, so this, by keeping it at fifty-four thousand, that just ensures that people who have jobs will have a very difficult time doing something like this.
I mean, I agree with that. It, it is extremely difficult, and I can be a testimony to that, that it's, it's difficult being here in the hours and still working full-time. It, it takes an awful lot to do that, and it's, it can be a strain on people, uh, but I don't obviously see an appetite for that, but, hold on. Randy had rung in here, he wanted to say something.
Well, just as a thought, and I know I talked with Commissioner Bogner a little bit about this, um, because this is always a contr- this is always gonna be a controversial topic, would it be simpler for the commission to be part of whatever raise other, the employees get, commission, so that the wages will continue to go up? It's four or five percent's not a huge amount when it's ten thousand eight hundred dollars, but at least it's something to kind of build on. And then in the future, if you want to have it a, a little bit higher, because it's ten thousand eight hundred dollars, doesn't, like you, like you said, Commissioner, doesn't cover much other than insurance if you're on. you're on insurance, but at least if you got the same raise that the employees were getting, it's, it's not a controversial topic every year of what you wanna do with your own wages. Just a thought.
Well, and as Randy and I were talking, it covers two, two areas. We all know we're not getting paid enough for the time span, but it's damn hard after you've run to say, I'm gonna raise my wages. I mean, you know, you agreed, you knew what it was when you ran. The other side of it is, we should, you start thinking, well, if we give ourselves a big raise and we ask all the other employees, because we are considered employees, to take some kinda cost of living raise, if you went to something like that, then you are treating yourself like you're treating the rest of the employees. It's one thing my dad instilled into me when we were running a lot of help. A man will work in some bad conditions and, uh, he'll, he may complain about the conditions, but he won't complain about you if you're standing there working beside him and taking the same values. But he'll sure have disgust for you if you start taking the cherry jobs and you put him out there on the rough stuff. So, it kinda fills two voids there. You, it, it needs to be going up, no question, but if you do it at the same rate as you expect everybody else to take, you're standing there beside him and you're taking your lumps with him or you're taking your step forward with them. And that's kinda how I arrived at that.
And I would, I would probably say also that, you know, when you compare counties, I think that's a justifiable reason to think it ought to be a little bit more, but I ran on the premise, I wasn't looking for a raise when I got here and I, I would, I, I feel like it would be going against what I campaigned on saying that I would raise my wage and certainly by that much isn't justified. Probably it is because of their counties, but we do every other week and a lot of them counties are going every week and, and so that's quite a bit more time. And, uh, so I, I don't know that I could support it because of that reason. And, and you, you look at our counterpart, um, works for nothing in, in every bit of the amount of hours that we put in and so.
Yeah, but they're.
There's nothing to do with their budget, but it would justify them having this kinda pay too.
Yeah, well, and they meet after hours now, I think, don't they? Because that, that was the other thing I suggested was moving the meetings to the evening so that, I mean, and for me, it's not about, it's not about the money. It's about the, or it's not about me, I mean, obviously. Um, but this is about the type of people that can run for this position in the future. If we keep it at 54,000, people with a full-time job are not gonna be able to do this very well. So, I mean, that's, that's gonna leave it to people that are retired or people that, um, have, uh, you know, own their own business or, you know, make enough to where they've got the flexibility to, to do something like this. So, I mean, if we wanna continue to exclude, um, people, then we, then leaving it 54,000, I think will discourage a lot of good, hard-working people that could have a lot to contribute from doing this job, or from putting their hat in the ring for this job.
I don't disagree with that either. It's, it's a tough deal.
Like I said, had we moved the meetings to the evening, that would have, I mean, I wouldn't have asked for it because, I mean, that would have completely solved my problems, but there wasn't an appetite to do that.
Where are we at? I know there's a consensus of four to, to leave it where it's at. Is that pretty much where we're at yet?
Yeah, I mean, my only other thought, and maybe it's too personal for people, but, you know, you could create a thing, an income-based option so those at a certain level that need, you know, you know, they're, they have such a tight personal income position that they can't do this without assistance. Um, I mean, that's a little different because I think people should be paid for their time to, um, and I don't know if that, it's valued differently depending on who you are, but, I mean, I do agree with the point that, like, we, by not, it, it's pretty common in all elected positions not to really get paid a lot. Um, and, and it's, it's always been advocated as, you know, it's your duty and, you know, you need to just donate your time, but the reality is there are really good, community-minded people that simply can't financially afford to have this position that may actually be very valuable to the community if they, they, they were compensated. So, that would be my only thought. It's a little, it's a little out there, but.
Yeah, and, uh, just kinda to, to let you guys know as well, if your job doesn't offer health insurance and so you're on the exchange, if you take a jo, if you get elected, then you are forced to be on the county insurance. It's not an option, um, because you're no longer eligible for the healthcare exchange at that point.
I, I mean, that could be an easy one where, you know, you just give each commissioner the option to take the health benefits.
Right, but if it's, if it's offered, then you have to take it if you're on the exchange.
Or are you talking just compensated then?
Yeah. I mean, what about if you just said commissioners have the ability to elect, to have their, their insurance comped?
Yeah, that would, that would solve the problem, I think.
Can that be done legally? Still, used to be able to do that, I know. Well, basically, but as I'm understanding you, that those that have the hardship in that area, you could offer insurance to them and provide it.
Yeah, the problem is like, when you get your, if you're on the county health insurance, your paycheck is just zapped because it's so.
No, it's not like, or you.
That's, that's the big problem.
And then I, I do, I do think there's like, I don't know, in the government sector, but I think in the commercial sector, there's challenges of having different classes of.
Yeah, we, we can't, we can't do the health free, we can't just, we have to have, all the employees have the same premium.
So, you'd have to basically reimburse it through compensation. But like if a commissioner had a situation like Commissioner Weitzel suggested, we had a policy where like, we don't want a commissioner to, to get in that situation where they're actually at a negative position and we would compensate, you know, if there's proof that that happened, could we do that?
I, I don't, I don't think so. I mean, you know, I don't wanna run, run afoul of like federal insurance laws because of something like that.
Well, it would just be.
I mean, a lot of employees provide the insurance for, for say like, I'll just throw this out, for example, if you're salaried where I'm at, they offer insurance to you. If you're not, they don't.
It's not, it's not a health insurance thing. It's just certain commissioners may have a higher pay associated with, um, in impact.
Just based on my experience with the governing bodies, I think the idea of paying different members of the same body, different amounts is probably gonna be a, have some dangerous issues with it. I just don't see that being a great idea.
So, if you do that.
It may or may not be legal. It's probably not something I'd advocate.
So, if you, you do something like that, uh, you're gonna pay somebody more than other people.
I know, that's not equitable.
Yeah, that's not equitable.
You can probably figure out, I'm sorry, this brainstorm, you can fi, you could figure out fairly easily how much you'd have to pay as a wage to make sure that the insurance premium got covered and have it a little bit extra. I mean, that's math that somebody can do, right? I mean. Right, to have it for. But it'd be for all five, but that would say the level where all five would have a decent, would have, would have their insurance paid for from the wage, right?
Those of us that don't need that insurance though.
Maybe it'd just be compensation then, a year.
Then those people would just be taking the ca, yeah, they just.
So, that's a, that's a pay increase.
It was more money budgeted, yeah.
Yeah.
The job is going for both people. I don't have any trouble if everybody wants to put it with the same wages, the, the same increases as the employees are getting, but for me.
What we're doing right now, well, and typically what you've seen on county commission boards over the years, and I'll just be quite honest with you, I've watched it. Part of the reason I think it is to get other people in here is a good idea, Daniel, is because it has been retirees or people that have enough money to do that. And I've watched the wages have been stayed underneath that point where they could only make so much on social security. And, and so, you know, I've seen the fluctuation out over the years with their wages up and down and, you know, obviously years ago, there used to be three of them here, but benefits were provided and they had a, a bigger wage, but not comparable to what it would need to be today. But then, yeah, it's just not.
The budget item's just been frozen for a long, 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 long time and that's why it's, it's creeped up to the point where it's.
Well, and the 100,000 would bring it back to where it was per commissioner when it was three commissioners.
No, Commissioner, actually, it moved, it was 18,000, I think.
Yeah.
Or 15,000 before.
It was 18.
It moved back to 10,800. The 100,000's moving everyone to 20,000. It was a round number.
Okay, I didn't realize, because, yeah, I thought we discussed bringing it to where it was before.
That was a discussion, but it kinda, kinda like one of these, everyone had different ideas.
This was done, this was done to get five commissioners and I'd hate to have Daniel just leave without, you know, not understanding.
I'm gonna pay. You two are talking you would like to see de-normal increases, which is not gonna make much difference.
It would be.
10,800.
For four percent, it, I just did as a round, or top number, make it 56,160 for the total budget. So, it'd increase from 54.
Well, I mean, in budget, it's not gonna make much of a difference.
$2,100.
I was, first time I was elected, I was at that meeting in Topeka and, uh, Butler County was at 36,000 apiece with five. So, I just wanted to let everybody know that they've got a bargain here, hopefully, that they think they have a bargain with commissioners. We can't afford to do something like that, but.
We could, but should we? That's the point.
Well, like I said, it just, this determines the who can run.
Most of the people that got 36,000 at Butler County also have another job or a business.
You know, it would be an interesting thing to push to the charitable sector too and say, hey, like, we have, you know, they're always looking for equity and like, we, we have a little bit of a disparity in who's, who our elected officials are. Why don't you help subsidize that a little bit?
I would have turned that away.
Same people are asking us for dollars every day.
But, um, I don't, I'm okay with.
Are you going to endow that?
Yeah.
I'm just asking.
Are we gonna stay the same?
Yeah, I think we are, yes. That's what I'm hearing, but do you wanna? That the increase has come with whatever the employees is. Is that right?
That's what I'd like to do.
And you were there.
I, yeah, it just seems like a, I mean, everybody agrees there's a problem and I don't know. We tried to solve it in 10 minutes and we didn't.
No, no. We'll just leave it.
56,160, that's giving you the four percent. If four percent was a per, then we.
I think so, sure. I think that's allowable with everybody.
And there like other monies in there or?
District attorney, I don't think we did any cuts there, did we? One.
I, I just said the, uh, the two additional staff that they wanted to add and put on the fourth floor when they just said, hey, the people on the fourth floor aren't able to come to meetings and so they're not feeling like part of the group, so we need to renovate the fifth floor and now we've got extra office space on the fourth floor. And so, they're like, hey, let's fill that extra office space. Um, so, they requested two additional employees. That's what I asked.
I might answer to that though. He's had a terrible time getting employees as far as attorneys and their caseload's like 225 apiece a year. As I recall, an average in the state is like 150, I was gonna say. I thought it was close to that, 150 to 170. And so, they're handling exponentially more than what the rest of the state is and I think that's a justification for that.
Yeah, and I'm not saying it's not justified. I'm just saying that, um.
Through burnout and lack of pay, we obviously don't pay what the private sector can, you know, it's.
But they're, they're fully staffed now, I believe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's the last report.
Yeah, and, uh, you know, and, and when we provide them two more here, then there's gonna be a number of attorneys that need more judges and so then we're gonna provide that and three, oh, three people.
Two attorneys and then administrator.
And administrator.
I'm fine with this. We pretty well all agreed.
I think we have.
Majority has.
Yeah.
Well, we'll move to the county general. Are you gonna jump down to Prazer and come back up to that? Whichever. Randy, you wanna go through the county general?
Entering the number two different places. County general outside agencies, this five.
But we, we didn't follow all the way. Partner agencies were still on that, right? Yeah, sure.
Well, there's both. So, the general fund ones, this, the first line item that was there, which is this total, has economic development council, county fair, startup hedge, the farmer's market, police chaplain, extension council, conservation and ambulances. Ambulances is separate, but the two differences you guys had were in the county fair that we started talking, you guys started talking about, and then farmer's market.
Everything else pretty much stayed, didn't it?
Yes.
The conservation district, um, their match is 25,000. So, other than that, I'll sublode the extension council.
Well, and we already settled a matter on the fair, the market, didn't we? Farmer's market.
And I don't think you ever finished.
Didn't finish that conversation? I thought we did. Didn't we come to a, no, we didn't? Alright.
No, because we hoped you couldn't make the motion. Commissioner Frazo started making a motion.
That's true. That's true. You're right.
Yeah, so there's, there's actually a couple others. Economic Development Council, um, startup hedge.
Commissioner Weitzel had zeroed out, um, economic development, county fair, startup hedge, farmer's market and police chaplain, learn to take care of, and then extension council.
A lot of these we didn't give an increase. They asked for anyway, as I recall.
My only change would be to add the 4,000 back or whatever, the 3,000, whatever Commissioner Hurst did.
I took 25% off of that just 'cause, uh, in conversations, that's what I had. They, they were willing to, they were willing to take less and.
You talking about?
And based on that, what I said earlier, the 25 deals and they, if, instead of having a band, they can have two people there, one people there. They can make an adjustments.
Well, if they raise a little bit this year, they may recoup some of that anyway because they ain't charging very much.
Okay, so, are we thinking three there?
3,000 on that line item. We're in consensus with that for the farmer's market. I'm okay with that.
And I think, I think in the future, that way, they can look at.
Yeah.
Maybe raising the, the membership fee a little bit or something like that. I know I paid, I, when I went to, hey, Arlington, I paid $5 for a spot.
Yeah, that's just. That's not very much. It really isn't. They could go a little more, that's for sure. Recoup some of that, so. And I think the other one in there is, the only variance really is 18,000 and that was just my straight through 10% caught on those agencies. And so, I see 20,000. Now, what was that for, Randy, on the 20? I know you're plugging numbers. County fair, yeah.
That was raised a few years ago because the rent went up.
Yeah. And they was okay with staying flat on there, so. I'm okay with that. There's three of them. Any comments on that?
Whoa, 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 we put that in the wrong line.
Okay, yeah. So, stay with the 20,000?
I would say so. That's what we got there. And everything else is the same, is it not?
Conservation.
Conservation.
That, that's what they need for their matching grant is 25,000. That, that's what they need for their matching grant is twenty-five thousand?
And is this, that and extension was the only one we wasn't going to because of that matching, but go ahead, John.
Yeah, that was, that was my reasoning is, is that's why I didn't zero him out, but left him at twenty-five thousand.
Reno County Conservation District, does that go to the district? That's a stickler that got, I, I thought that Conservation District, that would have been a, a federally funded deal, and that's what got us in trouble last year. I think that's probably mislabeled. Doesn't that go to the Cheney watershed? No. No?
No, that's a different.
It is the district? Yes. Yeah, Cheney Lake Watershed is, they work hand in hand, but they are separate. That's what I thought. So Conservation District itself is getting so much money from Reno County too now.
So we're down to fifty thousand where you guys were at?
Basically, that's used primarily for, for labor and equipment that they have and, uh, that they ran out also, uh, the way I understood it.
Yeah.
And that's, that's to get the, uh, federal funds primarily.
Yeah, twenty-five thousand gets some of the federal funds. Twenty-five thousand gets some of the federal funds.
And you got police chaplain here too, zeroed out. What's?
It doesn't go to the operations.
That was moved to the sheriff's budget.
Okay, that's right. That's right.
Well, uh, conservation does a lot. I, I'd.
It's pretty much, everybody wanted to leave it, so.
Yeah, I'd, I'd be willing to leave it.
Needs a lot of discussion.
The next one is the economic development projects.
What are we slated to spend a year now with the progress, projects that we have with Superior Holdings and a couple others? And with this other stuff coming up, what are we looking at? Because we have some other stuff down the pipe possibly coming that could not.
Without Mr. Strons, it'll be somewhere between three and four hundred thousand without his. So it'll go into probably the reserves this year.
Pretty much eat it up, yeah.
It depends on Superior Holdings has a, has two different benefits with us. One for the job creation, one for the moving people in. So they're probably around thirty to forty thousand that they'll get from us and then the two eighty-five. So we get barely into three hundred, so it depends on what you do with Mr. Strons, but it'll be between three and four.
Or if we do.
Or anything else that comes up.
Well, that's, that's just, I marked it down because a comment was made the other week that, well, we don't spend it every year anyhow. You don't spend it, why tax it? But, you know, that's just a talking point. Kind of, it's, it's, it's actually being used. It's damn sure going to be used now.
Yeah, that's why I put it at zero, because, you know, it's, it wasn't being used and, and kind of opposed the idea anyway, but.
And we got, we have some potential that if something would come in south of town that we might need, uh, that reserve that we've got in there, it's gaining interest right now, we might have to use, we might see a need to use that for roads. Improvement road for the projects that might be coming down the road.
Yep.
So leave that for.
You all right with that? Okay, yes. And you only had one other item under there, didn't you?
Yeah. I'm okay with a hundred and thirty.
What's in that line?
Uh, this one?
Mm-hmm.
So ten thousand, I, on the miscellaneous, I'm not sure what the ten thousand we have budgeted, the seventeen hundred, I'd have to look at the details. But this is the discretionary position, it's at sixty thousand dollars each, so a hundred, so.
That's right.
A hundred and thirty, we have two positions.
And if they're going to use this money, we, we've got to vote on it.
You have to.
Otherwise it stays.
It stays under your control.
But when they're talking about adding people, Randy's going to think, well, we do have those two floater positions. And so if we don't put it in there, then there's.
Then it's time for us to buck out and do our job if they really don't need it.
Or we could just do it now and be like, um, not budget it and, uh, then if they need it, then we look at other things. Because if we don't budget it, um, then there's a lot, is a lot less likely we'll have people asking for, um, additional employees mid-year.
I ain't hearing anything from the left end. I did earlier on this, that's why I wondered.
Yeah, spacing out a little bit. Um, the, I'm talking EcoDevo, right?
No, the way.
Floater positions.
Am I the swing vote again? Am I, am I the swing vote?
There's actually three and.
Where's everybody else at?
You're with the hundred and thirty, hundred and thirty. Parks is a hundred and thirty.
That's kind of where we was at.
Hurst has just said he's willing to go to the hundred and thirty, so. Yeah, John, he's leaning to the ten originally.
With the risk of offending Randy, um, which is really hard to do, actually.
Which Randy? Either one?
That one, that one. You're, you're a little easier.
A little easier?
Yeah. I.
I didn't want that to get out.
Yeah. I think he would, I think he would handle a single in the budget fine. And then if he needed to do another one, he would come to us like he always does and, and, uh, move some money around. So I, I think it's a, it's a healthy challenge for you.
So are you saying seventy thousand here?
Yeah. And, I mean, we've never, when you've come with a, a true need, we've never said no. And I, I think it's good to run budgets kind of tight and that keeps everybody sharp and.
I'm going to jump on that bandwagon. I'm going to make you mad, but I'm going to follow that suit. I think we ought to cut it down. And that's why I, earlier, can we do mid-stroke?
You can't make Randy mad. I've never seen him mad in my life. I don't, is it, is it possible?
Can I request then more than sixty thousand for that one position? Because, you know, cost of living's going up.
What do you want?
Seventy-five?
Yeah, done.
Let's do sixty-two.
No, I think seventy-five is fair. That's good negotiation.
Seventy-three fifty ninety-nine.
Guys, I apologize. I've got to go pick up my son from school. Uh, he's got to travel like four miles to a job site as part of a college class. So I've got to go. The only, the other thing, I, I think we should leave the raise at five percent. Inflation is high. And, um, the, uh, the appraiser's office, I said we should cut a half person there because when he came in here talking about this great new program, uh, we, last year, um, with all the photos and stuff, we told him, well, you're going to have to cut staff if it's going to increase efficiency. Um, so they got the register of deeds to pay for it instead, so they got the program, plus they kept all their staff. But we had told him, if you get this new program and it's going to increase efficiency, then you should cut staff. And so I had a half person there. So I'll be back in about half an hour.
I hope we're done by then.
Well, we're going to.
And, and if you do vote on it, I'm a no vote.
I'd hope so, but do we finalize on this? Randy, did we finalize on that? I've got a lot of feedback. He shut his off with you. Did we finalize on the personnel? One, two?
I put it as one with a little bit higher, the seventy-five thousand, so it's still one position, but it's a higher wage.
Yep, I am too. So that's what it is. All right, move along.
And the appraiser is.
What do you think, Randy, of Commissioner Weitzel's point?
I hope they are more efficient, but when that was discussed last year for the current budget, um, it was, my take on it was to cut a position or find the money, you know, to make the cuts. And that's when the register of deeds used her money, her tech fund, which is non-tax, non-property tax, to help pay for that, the aerial flights. So we left the position in there. I think he's fully staffed right now.
Appraiser is?
The appraiser is, so that would be removing a position.
If we removed all of his help, the county would be happier with us.
But we wouldn't be following state law.
That's exactly right, but I'm just saying. I had to throw that out.
Sometimes you're between a rock and an art place.
But Commissioner, the, I guess my answer would be, this would not be, I don't know if we have enough information yet to check for efficiency based on the new aerials and the photography that was done, because it just went into effect for this year. It was maybe done last year. We don't have time to see if Commissioner Weitzel.
It's still on theme here to challenge the departments a little bit. And he made a commitment and this is a six-month notice that the efficiencies need to be implemented. I mean, I, I, I haven't heard anything negative out of the department. I, it seems like he's doing a good job. But challenging them to be more efficient, I think, is, uh, in line with, with what we've been trying to do.
What, what did you, let's go back further. Uh, what, what was his ask and where did you put him, Randy?
It's a twenty thousand dollar cut, twenty-one, twenty-two thousand.
What's that actually? I cut thirty thousand because we didn't have a specific position, so we, I just removed thirty, that number. That's showing for Commissioner Weitzel's thirty thousand dollars, assuming that's, well, a position.
I, I like where Commissioner Weitzel's going on it and I think we need to, we need to challenge, challenge the department to make good on their efficiency promise.
My, my opinion would be to, for that challenge, if the commission wants to do that and then, but it would be next budget time. When we're here next year, he has to have data showing that he's either more efficient or to look at that. And if, and the commission could make that decision to cut a position.
Yeah, I, I really like Commissioner Weitzel's position and, I mean, this is so hard and we're not make, like, we're trying to actually make a material impact to the tax, um, you know, levy. And it's so hard, like, we are like clawing at everything and it's, we're barely making it down. So we got to do something if we want to.
What's the reasoning by reducing one person if, and I don't think that's enough for one person, quite honestly, comps and everything, right?
Last year during the budget process, the appraiser and I, T, had asked about doing, was it digital? I forget the term for, it's the photography, the aerials for them to use to where they don't have to go out in the field as much. They still have to do the seventeen percent and.
And that's implemented fully now?
This year it has been. But again, I think it took place, it got implemented this year. So I don't know that he's had time to see the efficiency, but at the time, Michael had commented, or you guys had talked about removing a position for efficiency. And he said, well, I might be able to do that, then tried to find money. So that's when we found the money and he's fully staffed right now. See you guys wanting to do the challenge and if there's, or another option is if there's a vacancy, he needs to come to the commission to fill that vacancy, freeze the vacancy and he can see if he has that at that point.
The thing I like about you is you fight for your employees.
Reno County has great employees. They do.
And he never gets mad about it.
No, he doesn't, no.
Like, most.
And you should.
Get a little cranky about it.
Well, if that was his statement, and I do recall the, the implementation of that and that that was supposed to extremely cut down on the the road trips and all that, I, I could, I could see justifying this.
It, it's just a good, you know, a little push to actually do it.
So, but in all likelihood, if you say that if he loses an employee, he comes back for review as to whether he needs that, he probably not going to lose any employees. I mean.
People, I mean, they can always, I mean, people may always be looking for a different job, so. Or the other thing would be to even cut it to a part-time position.
How's that factor then if he, if somebody transferred to another department and lost that, then that wouldn't really be a reduction? It would, but it wouldn't.
Well, if he froze the position, he still would need county commission. He would come to an executive session request, you know.
Are we talking cutting an actual employee here?
That, that was my understanding from Commissioner Weitzel is, and I just came up with a number to put in there because we didn't, since they're fully filled, there's not a person that's identified. It's, it was to get rid of one position, which would basically be the next person that leaves, that position's not filled.
That's twenty-two thousand something odd dollars John cut out.
I, I think, I think it's, I think it's fair.
The only fair statement out of that, maybe be real careful what you say. Because you could be held to the fire.
Someone's going to remember it, yes.
Yes.
Well, and it's, I'm looking at the full thing here. Started out at seven forty-two, seven twenty-one.
The seven forty-two, I guess I should clarify, that column with seven forty-two, that is at a five percent pay increase. Your numbers, seven twenty-one, based on my conversations, as most of you said, go to four percent pay rate for all employees.
So this is the four percent.
That's at four percent.
Not, not doing anything with any employee.
Right. But then Commissioner Weitzel's takes, I took an extra thirty thousand off, because again, that's just guessing, not knowing what position it is.
What's his turnover rate?
He hasn't had a lot lately. I, he maybe one a year if, I mean, there's not a lot of turnover in the appraiser's office.
I didn't think there was.
I'm okay with keeping it at seven twenty-one.
Where are you at?
With a review.
I'm at seven hundred. I'm at with Weitzel's number.
Six nine.
Six ninety-eight, six forty-nine.
It's the efficiency challenge.
Now I'm the swing vote.
I'm going to jump on board with Daniel and John. So that's what you got.
So what's the number?
That's six ninety-eight, six forty-nine.
You know, Randy, like, you could, not that you're not a rock star already, but you could, you could really become a rock star if you took, like, what we do, you know, and just like chat, like, just keep challenging employees to be more efficient, more efficient. And like, have the conversation of like, what does it look like if we reduce your budget by ten percent? And like, bring more of that, um, here, because it's tough. It's really hard and, you know, it can even be a little emotional for the, the departments. But like, time and time again, like, you're seeing, like, we've put a little challenge out there and they adapt. And they're, I think they're better, like, county's better, everybody's a little sharper, like, it's really good government. I just, I'm just encouraging you to keep, like, keep looking at the positive, like.
I know, and I appreciate him trying to be efficient, because that was not the case years ago. When I had ideas to be efficient, to reduce help, that was a mortal sin. And I don't want anybody to lose their job, but there was equipment that could provide that three-person swing that I could have taken out at department and provided same services that just wasn't going to be heard of. And I, I think you do things and I, would you not do that if you could do that?
No.
If you can reduce labor and get the same thing, it just happens.
It's just like, you know, anything, you know, good, you gotta, gotta work hard for and, you know, it's a little painful. But it's producing good results, I think.
But guys, on the other hand, I've heard two department heads tell me in the last, what is it, two weeks? what is it, two weeks, that they haven't worked a 40-hour week in forever. And I told them, all the people I know in the private sector that are in positions similar, haven't worked 40-hour week. Personally, I've never worked 40-hour week. That's usually about Wednesday evening. And, you know, not saying, but that's what I chose. It's like I spoke earlier, that's the business I chose to be in. And, but, I, I can see certain people have to be on call whenever the phone rings, you know? It's, when you are in those salaried positions, things change. And, and part of that is, is the 40-hour week goes away. And even, even salaried people, when the emergencies hit, you get called in, you're on call. I mean, we've all seen it in our businesses, and it's not only something that happens in government, it happens in pri, in the private sector all the time.
I'm torn because the efficiency that you're talking about, especially in this department, we keep hashing, hashing over is, is, it's one thing to be efficient, but by that, did he mean being efficient using this program so everybody does that job sitting there? Or just keeping them from going out and doing that job, because that kills man-hours if you can sit there and, and do the same thing efficiently faster? But if you're gonna spend two hours on a computer versus going two hours going out, we're not really doing a whole lot, other than saving fuel and mileage on vehicles.
I don't know that, he didn't get into those specifics, it may have also been.
See, that's where I'm kinda torn, if I, if I jump on that other side, it isn't the reduction, because I think every government body ought to look at reducing as much as they can.
I, I believe appraisers are required to do some onsite, generally, stature.
You have to.
I, what you find, when we got the secondhand, because I sit long meetings, the aerial helps you identify, not everybody gets a permit when they build something.
Well, we.
But the aerial, so, so it helps you find things you didn't.
Now, listen, this is what I spoke of in the town halls, they're all back to Patrick, when we were set those, that, you know, you can try to build something, it's still gonna be found eventually.
And so sometimes if you, this is just secondhand from a appraiser, but you can drive by a place and not see everything, if you get the above, with the aerial, you can.
Well, you build the garage back in the trees, yeah.
At least how many square feet is that building, they tell you something, well, the aerial captures it. So it's, it's probably efficient in the sense that their data, it's, the data's better. It may not be efficient in terms of like, say, any time. I'm not trying to, he's the one that made the big stock, so I don't want to.
So our last item.
So do you know if they're any efficient?
We're gonna have to take time to come back, so.
Can we approve it on?
We won't have the budget numbers.
So. I guess my other question, because you've made quite a few cuts, but that's also assuming, which you hadn't taken a vote on a 4% pay raise when the mill, the flat mill levy had a 5%, 2%, 3%, or, yeah, 2% cost of living, 3% pay for performance, or vice versa, one way or the other, but since you've cut some of these other agencies, I would want you to consider, you know, as Commissioner Weitzel commented, with inflation at 3.5%, 4% barely covers that, our health insurance rates went up a little bit this year, but, you know, would 5%, that number be on the table?
So settle this one on the, did we already do that on the?
The appraiser?
Appraiser.
Well, you had the numbers, I thought, to move it down.
Number.
Or you could cut that in half and make it a part-time position. If he loses a position, only hire in a part-time.
Well, that's the only thing I wish was answered to, the efficiency, whether that means just the efficiency of finding stuff versus not needing the help.
I can see if he's available.
Well, yeah, I know we need to move along, but we could come back to that if he just wants to answer to that real quick. I'd be comfortable with that.
We're assuming that at present staff level, it's not efficient.
By his own words, it could be more efficient.
Well, that's, that's.
There you are.
Before it was efficiency only.
Yeah. That's why I said, count your words. Did you summon him, or?
I asked if he's available.
What's the next one, so we can move down to there? If he's not, that's fine, we'll do something.
Pay raise.
The pay raise?
Yeah, the pay raise.
Where's everybody at on that? Stay at the five?
Two and two.
Five's fine.
I think the majority will stay at five, so we can just be there.
Okay, so what's the number here, going with?
5%, isn't it? Was you there, Juan?
I was, I was on the four.
He was on the four?
Commissioner Weitzel was at five, so.
I had four, four.
I had four. Like I said, I, I think it's better to do more raises than more employees. Pay the people that are good more, hold the line on new employees. I'd rather give it, give you five there, and, I mean, I already, we already cut your extra employee, I'd rather give it to you on a, on a 5%.
Feeling?
I think you're the swing vote, Randy.
What normal in businesses, takes three years to get your money back from training, something like that?
Yeah.
Well, certainly, I would never set up, do anything to abuse employees or in that regard, but my point was just purely that you're not seeing that on the private sector very much. I know some businesses are, and that's great, if they can.
We don't pay great either, honestly.
I'm okay leaving it the same. I'll give you that one.
So by saying, you're saying that at five?
Yeah, did we cut all your employees out that you wanted?
You left one, but you also cut one out of the appraiser that.
Yep.
Wasn't expected.
So.
I'm still not, that's a good trade. I'm still not sure that's.
Well, that's what I'd like to hear from him. I, I said I, I would like to hear more, but, yeah, so we got 5%, what's next?
That was it.
Was it?
So tell me why.
Well, aging and transit, we didn't, obviously, didn't make a thing there.
Just, you, like, you've gotten all the inputs. We have proven, issue that to you, why we can't. Does he be done?
Probably have the number that you probably, let me look and see on the.
So does that, did we put that in for the, for the commission at 5%, 4%?
Make a mock motion.
Well, you already translated it to the bill, is that what she's?
Yes, the mill levy and the taxes that are.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Let me, let me give you a mo, a motion to consider, Patrick, are you ready? Thanks. You're already gonna say no, you haven't even heard it yet.
Okay, the, the state, here are the stakes. Here's why I'm scared. The stakes of doing it wrong are that we get stuck at revenue neutral, because when they change the revenue neutral, they pass the whole thing, the state put in a penalty potentially, said, if you don't do it exactly the right way, then you're stuck at last year's budget, and now the.
Here's, here's what the motion would be. The motion would be to amend the budget as prescribed today in the sheet, and to file accordingly with the state. What, what's wrong with that?
Well, again, we don't, I think we should file a little, the state need, this isn't the right format. I mean, I know what you're doing.
I understand this is, but this will produce the right format. Randy will make the changes based on this. It will output a new number. Are you saying because we don't see the exact mill levy, we can't approve it?
Well, and then sign it.
What, what, do we have three commissioners that would stick around and sign it today?
Yeah.
How long is it gonna take?
I, I told him I was taking the day off today anyway, so if I don't get out, they're gonna get out there.
And while we're waiting, I think this kid's gonna go.
I would take that number and then take it up to Shonda, but we still have the special districts to discuss. We have another budget to discuss.
Right.
With an R and R hearing.
Okay.
I, I believe that, I, I'm a fairly flexible person, but the county budget is the most important thing we ever do all year, so we just.
But if, I mean, if you need to leave, we can probably get you by phone for the vote.
Well, how much longer do we have?
We gotta open another hearing for special district budgets, which probably gonna take.
Is that a public hearing for that?
Hey, I have a question. Sorry.
State your name and who you are.
I'm Liz Lutz with the Conservation District.
Okay. Hold on, hold on, your mic's off.
Oh, sorry.
Do, do that again.
Sorry. I'm Liz Lutz with the Conservation District. Sorry, I'm out of breath, I was running. I was watching on the YouTube channel, and I saw listed, we were at 50,000, and then I heard Weitzel's comment about 25,000, and I just need to know where we landed on that.
You're the same. You stayed the same.
We stayed at 50, okay. Okay. Just wanted to clarify, I heard you ask about the, the watershed, and the watershed does not get funding from this money. We are the grant holders for the, the watershed, so, just for some clarification on that.
Nope, nothing changed.
Thanks.
Yep, thank you.
You walk slower going out.
Yeah, yeah. Take the elevator, take the elevator.
You met the deadline.
You ever thought of a courier position? Because you're quick. I'm just saying. Okay, anyway, go ahead. Thank you. Appreciate you coming back in.
Now you need, need to open the R and R, the hearing for the R and Rs.
And so we gotta vote on both of them at one time?
No, let me get these.
I didn't think so.
Separate. But we're waiting for numbers on. Well, all you gotta do is note that we opened and closed it, because nobody's here.
I know, yep, that's what I was gonna do. You ready? All right, we'll open a public hearing for the revenue neutral rate and budget hearing for Reno County special districts at this time.
Maybe Cindy's got something she wants to.
Does, uh.
Okay, just checking.
I need to be here for public discussion. Seeing none, well, I guess we'll close it.
I need to adopt the budget resolution.
All right. Do I hear a motion to?
Some of.
Some, President, President, 20, 24, 23. Mr. Friesen, anyone else want a second? How about you?
Second.
Mr. Bogner. All right. Discussion? Not, roll call.
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Mr. Parks?
You betcha.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes. Motion carries four to zero at the absence of Commissioner Weitzel.
And now you can discuss the budget or adopt the special districts budget. Here's the summary of each, taxing entities are all fire districts. Utility districts, again, are user fees now. They don't have tax levies.
Are, are we any closer, this is off topic, I won't spend very long, are we any closer to the work they were working on, making them one district?
Yeah, I mean, there's, Adam, yes, but we're, that's a fall project. I think the, that's an October, November thing.
Sensitive.
We want to be ready for the '26 budget process.
And my closer, Adam's, Adam and Travis have talked to a lot of the different fire districts and volunteers and kind of worked through, done some of the education work. That's the kind of, that's, those are the steps they were working on.
Yeah, okay. All right, I'll shut up now. Go ahead, Randy.
Didn't really have any.
You don't have anything? Anybody got any discussions on this budget?
For the, all the fire districts to continue to pay what they do for their operational costs and plan for capital transfers into their reserve funds based on their CIP that Adam and Travis have worked with each district on.
Not a lot to be done here.
There's not many areas to cut.
Kids, not much you can do, so.
Gotta have fire protection.
You'll be okay with this one, will you? Just looking for consensus. We need to. Do we need to take action now on that?
Yeah, to adopt that budget. Um, let me see where.
Did you, I didn't know if you had it written somewhere, and it said.
No, I think it's really just to approve the.
Budget as presented?
The budget, yeah, the 2025 budget here, this, as presented, the budget summary with each of these.
Well, I'll move to accept the budget for the special districts as presented by the county.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Hurst. Any comments?
Now, we're, we're approving this budget.
The special districts, because there's no changes.
We just had the hearing, and nobody was here.
Right.
You had the hearing, you passed the resolution to exceed R and R, which you will for, I think, all the fire districts, and then you discussed the budget, and now have voted or made a motion to approve the budget. So this, the special district budget, special districts budget will end.
Any further comments? If not, roll call.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Mr. Parks?
Yes.
Mr. Bogner?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero, and again, Commissioner Weitzel is absent. Okay. We're waiting on numbers. We can do some comments here or something if we want, or is she?
And I can go grab Mike, I guess he's on vacation, I just got a text, but he's doing the courthouse tour right now with his wife, so I can.
Well, I seen him in a KU shirt earlier, and I thought, he must not be working today. Yeah, okay.
Let him know we have questions, but yeah, we can get into the comments. It'll, it'll take Shonda a little while to.
Okay, yeah, let's, let's do your report, we'll do ours, and then we'll come back to that, close that part of the budget out. That's quick.
I actually left for more of the meeting.
I jumped on board.
So for my report, I mean, the monthly reports that are in the packet, any questions on those? They're for the health, human resources, IT, maintenance, public works, solid waste treasure, and youth services. I didn't know if there was anything in there that caught your attention, any questions on? The other thing I had is I wanted to remind, and then kind of get a, Quad County is Monday, September 16th in Wichita at the Intrust Bank Arena. Central County's hosting the, I guess, it's a tour, and the general, regional general manager of Intrust Bank Arena will give a presentation. Wanted to see which commissioners were planning to attend. And I, Commissioner Hurst, I know you told me you would be there, but.
16th.
16th of September.
I'll plan on, unless something, I'll let you know.
Okay.
If there's something that I, I'm pretty sure I'm okay.
I'll try. I, I can't at this point. Things ramping up at that point.
I usually have plenty of food anyway.
I'll try.
I don't, I don't plan on ice skating if they got iced down, so I'm just saying.
Boy, it's been a long time since I did that, and if I fell down, I'd never get back up.
Ain't no way, yeah.
That's all I have in my report.
Okay.
Commissioner Friesen, you got any comments?
Nope.
Mr. Bogner?
Yeah, I got a couple. Clear up a little bit on last month's deal on the fire, and some of those permits being denied. It turns out that most of that stemmed from people sending in copies of our permits that weren't complete. They'd gotten, certain churches and other places were giving out copies, and they were incomplete copies, page missing or something. The people who made the, the, I talked to Adam yesterday, Monday, Monday, and he was familiar, and talked to him about it, and at least one particular case and several others that he brought up. They are working with them. It just comes back to the same old thing. Please, please, when you got a problem, go to the department head, because it take, they're, they, they know what's going on. They need to know any complaints. By talking to somebody like me, you're taking the long way around. Paul Rotten, as I walked in the door, Yoder days, they had a, their main street, what they're calling their main street, had some holes and various things. They made some, some of the townspeople made some temporary repairs. Again, I told them, call the people in charge. Again, I told them, call the people in charge. I'm not sure who's got responsibility for those, that main street, whether that's the county or, or somebody else. They need to get ahold of Public Works and figure out who's actually got the jurisdiction on that road and handle it that way. I told them I'd mention it, uh, I have, but I also told them, go to the source, always go to the source. It'll, it'll be much more efficient and handled faster. And, uh, there's something else I, I was gonna jot down, but I think it's a combination of those, but I did wanna go back on, on, uh, last, uh, last, the other week's deal, and, and our, as far as I can tell, our people are trying to accommodate everybody the best they can, and it, it becomes a matter of, you get much better help if you don't try to copy something. It takes a phone call, they will send that written copy to you, you can walk in, sit down with them, it'll be handled right there. We're being, I think they're being accommodating enough if people would just use the process as it's been placed. With that, I think it's pretty well what I have to say.
I'll come back, that's why, I'll jump around.
Alright, well, the, uh, the county fair is coming up, uh, so we'd like to welcome people from around the county and around the state and around the nation to come and spend your money here. Um, should be a fun event, got some great performers, um, some great things going on. Um, so excited about that. Um, and, uh, as far as the budget stuff, um, I knew a lot of my stuff was pie in the sky, you know, um, but I ran on lowering taxes, um, and so that's what I tried to do. You know, I had, uh, two million, over two million dollars in cuts, obviously, a lot of those didn't make it, but, um, but, uh, we were able to cut a few things, so the tax increase wasn't as high. But, uh, that's all I've got.
I think everybody in the state of Kansas, as well as the nation, ought to be highly concerned, uh, with what the federal administration is, is proposing that they've been working on for two years. I talked with, uh, Senator Marshall this last Friday, they're working on this to try to get it stopped, and that's the three counties that I know of, and it includes a lot more than that, Barton, Pawnee, and Russell, it'll go south and it'll go east from there. It's called a National Interest Electric Transmission Corridor, N E I, N I E T C. In Kansas, they will, government will come in and by eminent domain, they will take this land. In Kansas, nationwide, there's a hundred million acres that will be taken if it goes through. In Kansas, there'll be over one million acres out of the fifty-nine total million acres that we have in agriculture based upon two thousand seventeen figures. That's if it's only five miles wide. In areas, they're predicting, they're, they have it up to twenty miles wide, the total mileage, and it includes basically the central plain states primarily, there's ten places in the US, but most of it is right here in the central plains. And it's all by eminent domain, and I've, I've picked up some brochures here, I'll just pass these on down. If you look on page six, you'll find out how much Kansas provides in the way of GDP and, uh, dollars and how we rate in the, in Kansas in agriculture. We're concerned with the fact that they'll take these acres at the same time that population in the world is expected to go up twenty percent by twenty fifty. Now, it's just, it's just devastating, and we should be concerned with private ownership of land, and it, it affects everyone. It affects the amount of exports we'll do, is, and they'll, that five to twenty miles wide will be transmission lines plus solar and wind generation. So I just hope that everybody will contact Washington DC with regard to that, there'll be some hearing dates coming up if it hadn't already started, but I think there is an email that you can send your comments to. But, uh, when I heard that, it's just absolutely devastating as far as I'm concerned with the state of Kansas as well as other states. And it's an overstep of the boundary of, of government. I attended the, uh, on my own, attended the, uh, Governor's Ag Conference, it was really interesting, and I had some really good panels there, that's all I had.
Thank you, sir. Um, do you have something you might throw in there, Ron?
Well, follow up on Ron's deal, I'd heard about this too, you've got to remember, eminent domain, when the government or one of the agencies they allow it takes that land, it's forever. It's usually a one-time easement. Essentially pay you nothing, and they've got complete control of your land on that easement, you will not build a parking lot, you will not park a piece of machinery on it, you will, the list goes on and on and on. If they take that much land, as Ron has said, it's ridiculous, and what it is, is a power play for certain things that they want. Solar, wind does not have eminent domain, but this, well, my brother brought it to me when we were discussing it, as Ron says, that gives them eminent domain, they are sidestepping the law here, the present law, and, to get what they want. And, uh, it's really serious, and the serious part we're gonna have to get on is our, our county's, uh, comprehensive plan. We're gonna have to get serious about this thirty by thirty, so we have some say when they start this grab, they've gotta at least consult us. Ron's brought up the biggest challenge, this whole region's gonna have, not only the state of Kansas, we're supposed to end up... We're supposed to end up just depopulated and, and, and we produce a heck of a lot of food for the world, and you take that many acres out of production, you've, you've changed the whole economic play here in this, in this state.
Primary states are South Dakota, Nebraska, Kansas, Eastern Colorado, Eastern New Mexico, Oklahoma, and Texas, and all of that, the bulk of it will be sent out of, out of this region.
So, something that isn't considered a lot is the other side of the economic picture that, uh, you don't get anywhere else, the promoters darn sure aren't gonna tell you the negatives.
Thank you, appreciate it. Folks, I'd say listen to that information and get on board if there's something you can do with that.
It's been a long day, um, a long, but since those topics are brought up, I just say, um, here at the next few meetings, I've been working with the Kansas Natural Resource Coalition on their water issue which affects Reno County. Um, so, I guess, just a reminder, since we're talking about that, I'll, um, there, we've almost have a proposed kind of draft resolution for counties to adopt to require federal, federal, um, I'm sorry, I can't quite grab the word right now, uh, but how we interact with the federal agency, so that'll be coming up at a meeting maybe in September. Um, we, we'll start with the water one, and then we're, I'm working with some other places, I work on the, uh, transmission line, uh, resolution, which might, with them, and we might look at adopting that preemptively, even though we're not part of that Grain Belt Express that's causing the issues you guys are discussing, it might be a good idea to put something on paper in case something ever came up here, so...
I'm, I'm really glad you're involved, Patrick, because we need to have somebody who knows what's going on.
I was just laughing because I'd rather not be involved, but unfortunately, I am, and...
You and a lot of others.
Yeah, yes, absolutely.
I don't have a lot, but I do wanna offer, again, uh, my sincerest condolences to the loss of life to the service family. And they've gotta really lift them up in this time, and, and the others that were involved in, in the tragedy there, there, there are some, I'm sure there's some struggles, and, and the days ahead are gonna be hard, so, uh, certainly keep them in your prayers, and, and we, we do think about you continually, so if you hear this, I want you to know that. One of the things, you know, in budgets, and one of the things we didn't look at, and, and I heard it just briefly mentioned, but I'd, I'd like to have an update, and we can do it at a future meeting, that's fine, I'd like to know where we're at with the methane deal at the landfill, uh, going forward with that, um, is that something we can...
There were some questions that, um, Commissioner Friesen had, that we sent out to some of the landfills that had a plant, something similar, by the companies that responded to the requests for proposals. It took months to get responses back, the people weren't real, um, quick to reply, Megan had to keep pushing them to get replies. I sent that, the responses to Commissioner Bogner, Commissioner Friesen last week, and we just need to set up another meeting with those two commissioners, Megan, Patrick, myself, to talk about the next steps. So, we are still working on, but we have been waiting on some response to some research, and that's why it kinda...
Well, it'd been a span, and I figured it was taking time, but I'm just curious what the update was on that, so...
As far as ready, one other thing, you mentioned the loss of Brian, we were just recently had, had another death.
Yes, we did, I'm glad you brought that up, yeah, what was the name of the, of the lady that we lost?
April Sirphos, from the District Attorney's Office, passed away this weekend, so, the District Attorney's Office has a loss of a current employee that, so, definitely...
Certainly, we offer condolences to that family as well, that's, uh, sad news, so, thank you for bringing that up, I forgot about her, I shouldn't have. Anyway, did you have something else?
On your, setting up your meeting, whenever it kind of works, uh, I, this time of year gets awful hectic, I prefer an early morning deal, so, we're in and out.
Okay, I'm done, are we just waiting for, uh, figures at this point, are we not?
Yes, and Michael Plank's on board of the court, he was gonna come down in a few minutes, so, can we take a break?
Yep, we take a recess here for ten minutes or something, till one-thirty?
And their appraisers had the exact same thought that I did. When we first got it, I thought so too. He said it took us two or three years to really get going and to really see, really see where, okay, now we're finishing this a month earlier than we did last year, or two months earlier than we did last year. So it is a process because we're adjusting our workflow and we're learning how to use the technology and all that stuff all at once, right? So we're still in that adjustment period. We are a little bit ahead of where we were last year. My plan as the director was to take the hours that that freed up and use it to work on other things that aren't maybe mandated or necessary is probably not the right word, but things that could be done, that probably need to be done. Equity reviews, things like that. Like, for example, here in Reno County, we have, we have tons of sales under 200,000. Speaking of residential, right? Tons of sales under 200,000. Our values under 200,000, spot on. I would put those up, you know, against anybody, any county, anywhere. Houses, properties that are valued over, say, 750,000? I mean, I literally have five sales over 750,000. I can't, I have a hard time valuing a $2 million property, right? Our higher end properties are most likely undervalued. And those are, those are things that if we had the extra hours, we could spend time making those more equitable. The other thing, the other concern that I had, well, not concerned, but the other thing I kind of wanted to work on is I think our commercial values are probably low as well. For the same reason, we just don't have the sales. So what are some projects, what are some studies that we can do internally to, to make those values better, I guess, for lack of a better word? Working with PVD, working with other experts, working with our own experts in-house on, on how we can, how we can do this. So that was my thought with what we would do with the extra manpower that we will eventually have, that we will eventually realize. But that's kind of where I'm at. Does that help? Does that answer any of the questions?
As for me, you kind of missed first part of that.
I'm fine. I trust you guys.
I'm gonna revert back. I'll leave it in there. Leave him alone. The budget.
Did you give Commissioner White's a little update when he was gone?
I know, I brought a person in to meet with you one time and you just said again, what, what you told him is that the higher end properties haven't, you don't think because of the comps you can use and so forth, that they're probably undervalued. And that's, that's what we were talking about when I brought that realtor in.
Yeah.
Which just confirms.
Which having said that, if you come to a point in time where you feel like you, this has become efficient enough over two, three year span, we're always looking to cut down the county workforce.
Yeah, and I understand.
Become possible, and I think we ought to look at that, not refilling if we could get to that point.
And I completely understand that point of view. I'm trying to look at it from both sides, just like I hope you guys are, so. Yeah.
Well, I did, that's why you're here.
Yeah, and I appreciate that.
I was a swing vote and I wanted to know.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and like I said, my thought was, you know, hey, we, we gave you a choice and obviously you don't remember it that way, but I mean, that, that was, that was my proposal was, hey, you know, we're not going to tell you, you decide which way you want to go, you know, do you, if it'll save, if it'll save enough to, to get rid of one full-time employee, then, you know, it'll be a savings for the county. If not, then, you know, not. And, you know, whether it was accidental or on purpose, but, you know, I tried to have it both ways and so. And so I didn't, I didn't try and claw back a whole full-time employee, even though that's what we had discussed a year ago. I, I, I'd proposed half, you know, kind of each in the middle.
And if that was my misunderstanding, then I obviously apologize for that, but.
Well, it sounds like to me, what you said earlier, that, that in your conversations with other counties that have started using this, or have been using it, that in time, it does reflect back in, in more efficiency, correct?
Yeah, that was my understanding in talking to this other appraiser, yes. And it's not a long time, it's just a two or three year process, which I guess that sounds like a long time, but in appraisal world, it's really not, so.
But more efficiency and better systems and saving man-hours never results in actually saving man-hours in government, it seems like. And that, that was just my point.
Everybody good? Thank you.
So Commissioner, just to clarify, so we're not removing the hat top?
No.
I just want to make sure if Sean downstairs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Enjoy the rest of your day.
Thanks, fellas.
Appreciate you stepping in.
How was it, sir?
Yeah, hey, it was great. I highly recommend.
Did you learn something?
I've learned a couple of things, actually. Well, and I had never actually been on the third floor, so. Been here for two years, I haven't been on the third floor yet, so that was kind of cool. And, well, I can't remember his name, one of the, one of the retired judges was up there telling stories and whatever, and he was kind of a cool guy to talk to.
That's not really a place you want to end up.
I know, that's, yeah, that's a good thing, right?
Litigation going on somewhere, something's happening.
Good thing I haven't been in a courtroom yet.
But I've told many people, the third floor, the courtroom up here is a beautiful room. The whole building is, looks very nice, but those rooms are as good as anywhere I've ever been, so.
Well, I remember as a young kid, when the jail was up on the top end and had the bars and the, the whole nine yards. We're not gonna ask you how you knew that. I told you when I was a kid. Look at me now, I damn sure, I'm a long ways from a kid.
You know, the amazing part about that courtroom was that, that fabric ceiling is still the way it is and the way it looks is crazy.
Yeah, and they talk about that. I had no idea there was fabric on the ceiling.
Yeah, well, that's maintenance.
Can't even tell.
Yeah, I saw years ago, an art, which is actually still in the maintenance, in his extra time in the evening, repainted all that gold leaves and did a lot of that work around here.
Yeah, all that gold lead, all the detail.
Yeah. Touched that all up, so that's pretty cool.
The commissioners in that year were not budget conscious. I don't know what, you know, I don't know about the cost of the time, but that's, we're going to.
To paint that?
Just, just all of you marble that.
Oh, yeah.
All right. Thanks, man.
Good, thanks, appreciate it, Michael. A little Jeopardy music? You got Jeopardy music back there? The other guy found some for us, I don't worry about it.
I can't believe Randy, I can't believe he didn't provide us lunch.
What do you?
Can we move to make Randy provide us lunch? Is that like a thing?
Maybe dinner here in a little bit.
What time do we need to be back if we do break?
I think 2:30.
I mean, Ron started his fasting diet today.
Yeah. Might get ketosis.
Yeah, you don't want to do that. So do we want to break till then? 2:30? Recession till 2:30?
Are we just going to prove?
Yes.
Or just mail it to me and call it?
Yeah, you know, calling would be fine.
It's doing a signature event, but like we did on the summer.
Yeah, that's not, time, time limit, so that's not as important.
I just wondered. Do we need three six?
Cab hanging down.
Oh, the map, okay. I was like, well.
Well, that's a.
I'm, I'm working with two mouses here. My laptop and the map.
I don't care, but I was gonna say, that's kind of weird.
Are you guys, did you motion to adjourn? You still on air? Yeah, I know, they need to motion to adjourn.
Yeah, by consensus, we said 2:30, we're gonna adjourn till 1. Adjourn till 2:30. I didn't have my mic on, sorry. I figured this was a big one, so I'll tell him, I may not be able to do that.
We're there. We are back in business again. We'll call this order meeting back to order. It's 2:30. Randy, you want to review the budget?
The-
As it was modified here.
The budget that when you began the day was at with property taxes, twenty six million five hundred thousand one hundred and ninety dollars with a mill levy of thirty five point seven six two. With all the cuts and adjustments, I believe it was right around two hundred thousand dollars in cuts to property taxes. And Commissioner Parks, I believe you have the one that has the mill levy number on there.
I do. It is twenty six million two ninety nine one forty eight at thirty five point four nine one.
And with some of the cuts made were the museum had a cut, a pretty significant cut. And then I believe the farmer's market had a thousand dollar cut from the original amount. And a couple other small adjustments or you reduce the discretionary positions down to one position from three to one. So that was over a hundred thousand dollars in cuts. So that's where you get your right around two hundred thousand dollars in cuts. So it is a reduced mill levy, but it's above the revenue neutral rate by about, I think it's one point oh three mills above the R and R.
Well, that was progress, better than where it was. That's for sure. Any questions on that? Anybody? Anybody want to entertain a motion?
I'm not sure that's-
So moved.
Second. Do we have a second? Is that you? Mr. Hurst. Okay. Any further comment? Seeing none, roll call.
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Mr. Parks?
Yes.
Mr. White soul?
No.
Mr. Bogner?
Budget passes four to one. All right. Well, with that, I think we can conclude an agendas or adjourn this meeting. We need to sign this. Yeah, I'll sign it and pass it around. Uh, we also got another one to sign, so don't run off. You got to do this one, don't let this resolution through the budget. Huh? We did the resolution already. We passed that. Yep, I just had it and didn't get it passed around. He was busy. You want to be back? Keep Miss Cindy out of my hair. She'd be mad at me if you don't sign that.